I would love to do roll call old school. We'll start with you Chair Bone.
Yabba dabba doo.
Thank you Supervisor Bushnell.
Good morning.
Good morning Supervisor Madrone.
Present.
Supervisor Wilson.
Here.
And Supervisor Arroyo.
Here.
Thank you.
Quill salute our great flag please.
I want to be the teacher of the fire and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. CAO what do we have for modifications today?
Good morning Chair Bone, there's one modification, item D2 is being pulled for discussion.
Okay. Alright, and then we have. Supervisor Arroyo you have something for the probationary folks who are in the, pretty much took up the whole back row. Hey, we're still gonna call on ya.
That's, I'm, I'm ready for that one if you are. Item B28.
Yeah, please.
Great, well folks feel free to come on up while I read this, whoever's going to come up on your behalf or all of you, whoever you prefer. Alright, this is a resolution in recognition of pretrial probation and parole supervision week 2024. Whereas probation professionals play a unique and essential role in our justice system and our state, keeping all of us safe by providing justice-involved individuals with the support, services, and tools necessary to successfully reenter our communities. Whereas through transformative evidence-based and court-ordered rehabilitative programming, probation holds people accountable while also helping justice-involved individuals transition out of the system permanently and onto a healthier and safer life path. Whereas probation departments are the key connector in the justice system in our communities, working to maximize the resources available within the courts, local governments, law enforcement, social services, behavioral health systems, schools, crime survivor organizations, and nonprofits. And whereas their work balances the need for accountability with the opportunity for justice-involved individuals to engage in rehabilitative treatment and services, providing support and the opportunity to help change their lives. And whereas probation officers in California are highly skilled and trained professionals dedicated to serving their community. Whereas California probation officers are diverse and highly educated professionals with over 72% of probation officers identifying as non-white and 51% are women with the majority having four-year degrees. Whereas probation officers undergo extensive training, 350 hours in the first two years, plus at least 40 hours annually thereafter. Training includes trauma-informed care, cognitive behavioral therapy, therapeutic and strength-based care, and emotional intelligence. Whereas this extensive training ensures probation professionals are prepared to manage trauma and other needs of system-involved individuals and safely connect them to the supervision and supports they need to safely and successfully transition back to our communities. Whereas probation is a cost-effective approach to improving public safety in California, whereas the role of probation spans public safety and social services, and probation has a proven ability to help rehabilitate offenders using evidence-based strategies that change their behavior. Probation helps successfully connect individuals to workforce development, substance use treatment, mental health services, family engagement, and educational opportunities. Whereas probation provides a multifaceted, integrated safety model through accountability and opportunity to address the behavior of individuals through supervision and connections to transformative programs and services. Whereas probation offers a safe, cost-effective, transformative alternative to incarceration, empowering individuals to make positive changes and embark on a journey towards a brighter future and safer communities. Whereas probation departments have a profound impact on the safety and health of our communities by working to address the underlying causes of crime, or providing evidence-based supervision and individualized rehabilitative supports and services which reduce recidivism. Whereas probation fosters a safe environment, safer environment for all Californians to live and prosper by ensuring those reentering our communities after justice involvement have received the support, services, and tools necessary to be successful. Therefore be it resolved that July 21st through 27th 2024, that the Board of Supervisors proclaims pretrial probation and parole supervision week in Humboldt County and extends our gratitude on behalf of a thankful and supportive community to all probation officers, juvenile corrections officers, and other department staff.
Thank you. Chair Bone and members of the board, thank you for taking this moment to show appreciation for the staff of the Humboldt County probation department. The department is home to a highly trained and highly compassionate team who work hard to improve safety for our community. They help justice-involved adults and youth transition back into the community, change their behavior, and find pathways to success. Their honorable work is demanding, emotionally taxing, and too often thankless. That makes this recognition not only of the department's sworn staff, but of the staff who provide the necessary supports to help move the work forward, all the more meaningful, thank you.
Is that it? Do any of the other board members have anything to say? Steve?
Just want to thank you all for your hard work, such a valuable service for our community, thank you.
Mike?
Just the same appreciation for all the hard work.
Supervisor Arroyo?
In addition to everything I already got to say, I just want to express appreciation, I've had some new insight into the work that probation does with juvenile probation through the Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Commission. It's been a pleasure to work with folks in probation there and to help understand all the different ways that diversion happens and then when diversion isn't successful, that we work with youth to get them in, in a good place to kind of proceed with their lives. And I think there's a lot of really incredible programs that the community could know more about. And I know you all are, are really trying to up your outreach and social media game and I appreciate that, I've been seeing it and spreading that good word about the, the work that you all do, so thank you, thank you for that.
The evolution of probation. I used to have, my probation officer when I was a teenager was Robert Graham. I knew him rather well. And then my, later on, my sister and her husband were called the sleepovers, they'd stay three nights one week and then four nights the next week at the juvenile hall. So, that was 50 years ago though. Anyway, but he ended up being, staying there for a while. Anyway, appreciate it you guys. Are we all in the new building now, are you guys all?
As of last week, everyone has moved in.
Has everybody moved in now, I know I went a couple weeks ago and you weren't all quite there, you like it?
It's pretty fantastic, yeah.
I think I was the only member on the board when we turned the shovel the first time, so that took a while. Alright, thank you. Is there a public comment on this item?
Kent Swawski, thank you for my opportunity to thank probation. In our day and age, so many people are let out of jail early for so many reasons. It's unfortunate and the only thing that really protects us after that is the probation department which makes a transition back to society hopefully in a good manner. But it is a little disconcerting to see all these people released early and then we're dependent upon these people. So, they may, I think they understand how important they are to all of us and our safety out there and helping the people who do need help to get back in society. Thank you for my opportunity to speak and thank you for my opportunity to thank them.
Seeing no one else? Are we there yet Nicky or?
Chair Bone, I think we might have to take a break, it's not streaming on the website, IT is currently working on troubleshooting that issue. He just walked out, I don't have a timeframe. It's still, it's still from Friday's issue, one computer wasn't taken care of, so we're trying to figure out how to remote in or get into that.
Can we do closed session? Can we call ahead and get closed session out of the way?
Yeah, we can do closed session.
Thank you.
Also Chair-
I don't think we're gonna stream closed session.
Streaming is not necessarily a requirement and it states on our agenda that if it's not streaming that audience participation is the best. Chair Bone, just point of order, you called for public comment.
On that one item.
Yes.
I pulled the, the one item, we haven't called for public comment on consent yet.
Thank you.
Chair Bone, we have another resolution and the folks are here, I'm not sure if you want to take care of that one before closed session.
Is that the City Eureka one?
It's the Eureka Street Art Festival, yes.
City, yeah, okay. Yeah, we can do that one if you would like to get that out of the way if they're, if they're here.
Okay, great. Well, please come on up folks. I saw we have all three of the organizers here. So it sounds like this isn't streaming unfortunately, but- That's okay. We will cherish it in our hearts. We'll take some photographic evidence. Alright, this is a resolution in appreciation for the Eureka Street Art Festival and its organizers. Whereas the Eureka Street Art Festival began in 2018 with its core mission being to create intentional accessible art that enlivens public spaces, stimulates community revitalization, and attracts visitors to Eureka. And whereas over the past seven years, the annual festival has added 100 new murals to the city and repainted three existing murals as well as added over 20 new public art sculptures to public spaces. And whereas the Eureka Street Art Festival has featured the work of more than 60 local artists prioritizing underrepresented communities and lifting local artists and businesses up through the festival and the mural apprentice program. And whereas the Eureka Street Art Festival has also welcomed artists from around the world and all over the United States, including from artists from Brazil, Toronto, Montreal, Puerto Rico, Los Angeles, Oakland, Seattle, Miami, and New York City. And whereas the Eureka Street Art Festival has beautified a variety of neighborhoods and commercial districts in the city of Eureka, including Old Town, the Broadway Corridor, and Henderson Center. And whereas the Eureka Street Art Festival has been volunteer-run and funded by community donations and arts grants since its inception, with generous donations from thousands of local businesses and individual residents, along with the innumerable hours donated by the organizers. And whereas the Eureka Street Art Festival has brought art levers from all over the community, the state, the nation, and the world to enjoy the incredible quality of street art painted as part of the event, who have contributed to the vitality and the local Humboldt County economy as visitors. And whereas the Eureka Street Art Festival has been a key success of the Eureka Strategic Arts Plan and has demonstrated the importance of public art and partnerships as a part of the local economy, culture, and community. And whereas the 2024 Eureka Street Art Festival will be held from July 29th through August 2nd throughout the city of Eureka and will feature more than 18 artists painting murals and placing sculptures in Eureka with daily mural walks at 5:30 PM. Now therefore be it resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors encourage all residents to participate in the Eureka Street Art Festival in its final year, for now, and heartily thank the organizers and participants with special gratitude to Jenna Katza, Michelle Cartledge, and Swan Osbry.
You're on.
Great. Chair Bone and the board, just on behalf of us three organizers, I'm, we're really grateful for this recognition. It's been seven years of true labor of love for us as three volunteers bringing this event to the community and we are really excited to be kicking off our final event this year. We've topped out over 100 murals in the last seven years in the city and really kind of pushed a culture of public art and appreciating our incredible local artists. So, thank you for this recognition and we are super grateful to have been able to do this work.
Right. Get up there Swanee, I don't know who's next, no go ahead, you go.
Yes, I would just say thank you for the recognition as well, it is a labor of love, it's been an amazing opportunity the last seven years and I, it's really sad, for all three of us, every year we've said this is gonna be the last year, but every year during the festival we're like, okay, let's do it one more year. But it is a lot of work and we're very happy and excited, but definitely a very bittersweet year for it to be our last for now, but thank you again for your, the recognition.
You're up.
Hi everyone, so I would say, there is criticism about murals and I, I just want to point out that every mural that's been painted, it's a private property owner that's chosen an artist and it's a reflection of what they're interested in and I think it's just paint, it can always be painted gray. And it communicates care, like the murals under-
Not everyone, we got boards on the side of our building.
I know you do, like the murals under Simoa Bridge, the calls for service since that have gone down 28% and so it's, I think it's, it's, it just communicates that people care about the, the area and I really want to thank Jenna and Michelle, they have volunteered so much. So anyways.
I would-
Thanks.
Every time I see one, I think we have to look back at Buck Sport Sporting Goods, who put their mural up over 25 years ago of the, the guys going through the rapids and, and on both sides. And I think Dwayne did them, I think.
Yeah.
And, I mean Dwayne's been doing them forever, but I'm just saying, the people, the Arc Lee Center, the, the ones that's befriending and opened the door for people to see, oh that's what it'll look like and allowed you guys made it a little easier pass, path to do this and even, and there's some really great murals out there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go through the consent calendar and then end the closed session. Since there's the disclaimer on there, so we will go through the consent calendar, so I'll, does anybody have anything to say on the consent calendar? Supervisor Arroyo?
I just want to thank Jim Clark for his service on the fishing game commission, we have a letter of appreciation for him on the agenda and I just wanted to give voice to how much I appreciate him.
Mike?
I move consent, minus, what is it? D2, and I want to thank everybody that's doing all the good work, the menders and the beautifiers and everybody else, so thank you for being here.
I'll second.
It's moved second, Supervisor Madrone?
Yeah, thank you Chair, I just wanted to, I know we're not required to stream, right, it's not a requirement. We do have a, a director here who's taking time out of his day to be here for the item that was pulled, so I was hoping maybe we could at least do D2 before we go into closed session, but it's up to the chair.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I think we can do the whole meeting without streaming according to, according to the rules, but I was giving IT a chance to get us on board and I, and I, I think this is a perfect time that we thank IT, because I was here at 6:30 Monday and had a blue screen and I thought it was one of those fishing episodes where they, you know, they're gonna do everything else. And it probably didn't help that I just watched the Beekeeper movie. So I, I called over and IT was in the office, in my office by 27, because they'd been here all night going around to everybody's computers. So, it was 10 minutes, I was down, I was back up and running, so I, I think our IT did a yeoman's job because they're, if you're planning on flying out on Delta today, you're not, so our IT's better than theirs, na 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 na. So, with that.
Chair, you still do need to take public comment.
I am going to take-
Okay.
Public comment. I knew that.
Of course you did.
It's on here. Public comment on the consent?
Kent Swawski, as far as supervisors, expenses that you ran in, there were no anomalies this time, not a lot of money was spent, just mostly travel things, that's always appreciated when the, we keep track of that. I did wish to make a comment on D11 and D12, these are both us working with apparently Cal Fire and other firefighters, which is very important at this time, we have agreements we're doing with them. For those of us who are watching, the Cal Fire trucks coming and going, all kinds of fire trucks filling in for them from other districts as people are fighting our fires here. I think this is the new normal and any kind of agreements and working, working we can do with Cal Fire and stuff is going to be imperative. And I do wish to do a shout-out again under, under, with these to Cal Fire and all the firefighters out there that are currently at risk trying to protect us, trying to protect our environment and for, for those of, those of us who do watch what happens regarding carbon imprint and things of the nature, these fires create a significant amount of possible contribution to some of our climate change issues out there. Mother Nature's always done that, right now she happens to be in burn baby burn mode and we can only do the best we can to protect our lives and our property, thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, Joe Timmerman here, I'm, I was here like a month and a half ago, I don't know if you remember, but I had some comment about the, the money that's been allocated for the earthquake of 22. And I'd just like to ask the board if maybe they could, to discuss amongst themselves of how the money's being allocated, because so far, when I first started this 18 months ago, I was told that the money wasn't gonna be necessarily spent just for low-income people and it was gonna be allocated for, for general residents and-
Hang on, I'm gonna, I may stop, this isn't on the consent, hang on just a second, let me get through the consent.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then you get, you're fine, you're fine, and you can come up and finish up on items not on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. Seeing no one else, it's been moved and seconded.
Thank you Chair Bone, we'll start with Supervisor Bushnell. Yes. Supervisor Madrone?
Yes.
Chair Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yep.
And Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries 5-0.
And now we have items pulled from the consent, which is D2. Supervisor Madrone?
Thank you Chair Bone, well first off I want to say thank you to Cody Rogatz, our Director of Aviation, as well as the show organizers for the Rumble Over the Redwoods airshow that's planned for August 10th and 11th. Really appreciate the hard work there, I know the community is very excited about it to have the airshow come back. I did have some concerns about, some airshows do simulated bombing runs, but that is not gonna be occurring in this show. There will be pyrotechnics to, or fireworks to enhance some of the elements of the show and I know there is some concern from veterans and others with animals about the impact on that to PTSD and other things. The good news here is that we know when it's happening, unlike 4th of July and New Year's, you never know when the next one's gonna go off, right? And they go on for hours and they go on late at night, this is in the middle of the day on Saturday and Sunday between noon and 4 o'clock. So there's been really good notification to the community, again I thank you Director Rogatz for all of that and I think the community is very much looking forward to this. And for those that are sensitive to this, hopefully with the advance notice it, it helps reduce any impact there might be, but, so if you want to say any words, that's up to the chair, but I just wanted to thank you for your efforts.
Excuse me. You can sit wherever you want, Mr. Rogatz.
Thank you Chair Bone, Board of Supervisors, and Supervisor Madrone specifically for bringing this item forward for discussion this morning. I appreciate your kind words Supervisor Madrone, but I certainly want to say thanks to all of the people that have assisted us in getting to this point this morning. And that really starts with our aviation department management team, they've been working for the past several months in the early mornings, late nights, and on the weekends to assist with organizing this planned event at ACV. August 9th will serve as a practice day, there will be, you know, additional aircraft operations occurring on that day just like there will be on the 10th and 11th. And this allows performers to familiarize themselves specifically with the setup at ACV. This work has not been something that takes away from our normal day-to-day operations of our airport facilities, but it is in addition to those responsibilities. We're not paid extra for this work, nor am I here this morning looking for a pat on the back for my team stepping up and, and assisting with all of this work. That's not why we're working these extra hours at all. Why would all of us agree to put in this extra work? I was approached by a local business owner about this airshow concept several months back, an individual that was willing to foot the bill for putting an event like this on, knowing that it would be a major money-losing endeavor for him personally. I don't have the finances as I'm not responsible for the event finances, I do know that the county has $0 in checks they are writing for this event to happen. Between ticket sales, food vendor sales, sponsorships, and all other revenue items associated with the event, they may get to covering half to three-quarters of the overall costs, which is likely to exceed over a million dollars, again costing the county $0. Our aviation department has been assisted in development of this agreement before you today and the overall concept of the airshow by several of our departmental partners, including but not limited to County Council specifically, Mr. Scott Maverick Miles, the CAO, Ms. Alicia Hayes, as well as most of her team, Assistant CAO, Ms. Karen Clower and her ADA team, Planning and Building Director, Mr. John Ford, Sheriff Hansel and several of his team members, HR Director Zach O'Hannon, Risk Manager Amanda Phillips, Economic Development Director Scott Adair, Public Works Director Tom Topkin Madsen, and several others that I'm forgetting to name here. I'd like to just say a personal thanks to all of them for helping us get to this point this morning. Now let's go back to the why we are here today to discuss this, why have so many people worked so hard to get to this point? Why has this local business owner agreed to finance this endeavor? It's about bringing our community together around a special event. This proposed event will be first-class in every way, we have the best airshow director in the business helping us organize this event with the best performers in the industry. So everything is done in a safe manner that brings the community together, inspires the next generation to explore aviation, and educates them about aviation history and honoring our veterans. As Supervisor Madrone highlighted, we've had recent discussions about the pyrotechnics, which is standard as a part of an airshow. The airshow does plan to utilize pyrotechnics on the airport property to add to the entertainment value of the planes flying overhead. These pyrotechnics will not, as Supervisor Madrone highlighted, include random fireworks being shot off all day and night like we see around the 4th of July throughout our communities in Humboldt. These pyrotechnics will include flames and associated audible features on the grounds in concert with music that is being played for the crowd while aerobatic acts are being performed for the crowd. These pyrotechnics will take place in a vacant field 1,000 feet from the crowd, the pyrotechnic group being utilized is also considered the safe and, safest and best in the industry. They work at the two largest airshows in the world every year at Oshkosh Air Venture in Wisconsin and Sun 'n Fun in Florida. More on the local front, they also do one of the largest California airshows at Mather Airport for the California Capital Air Show in the greater Sacramento area. We will also have additional safety resources on-site for these events, not just because of the pyrotechnics, but it will certainly help ensure that everybody remains safe during the event, including a specialized firm that only does firefighting for airshows and has decades of experience combined amongst their team. Be happy to answer any additional questions and thank you.
Additional questions? Supervisor Wilson?
This, this contract is for two years.
This contract is for two years, is that right?
So this contract is set up term-wise to allow for the airshow in 2024. Another one, if all parties agree to it, in 2025 and 2026.
Oh, and 2026?
Yes.
All right, so, and, I mean, I really appreciate the work that's been put into this and the folks are doing. I want to acknowledge that it's not free to the county, and I get that we have a private donor that's putting in a significant amount of resources into this, but our staff time is not without cost, and you enumerated that there's multiple departments that are involved with this, and we haven't had done this yet. So, in my reading of the contract, if it turns out that even under all our best intentions, there is maybe the community doesn't fit for some reason, or whatever that may be, we have a way to pull back and say, okay, that was a good try, or whatever. Or if it's really successful, we can iterate on that and figure out ways to make that better. So I do appreciate that. I do know, I mean, I did, you know, typically for events of this size in the community, we do event permits, but we don't have one in this case because it's on county property. So there's an assumption that we have the Planning Department has reviewed the operations to the degree necessary. I will say that upon hearing about pyrotechnics last week, there was some concern that was brought up, and I want to acknowledge that you reached out to CAL Fish and Wildlife to check in, to make sure that even there's no nesting birds in the area, and those are things I appreciate that very much. Because when we had an event, when they were proposing motorcycle races at Ferndale, we had to go through a CEQA process because it was a change in the use. And I guess in this case, it's the Airport Master Plan allows for airshows. I'm not sure if the Airport Master Plan took into account pyrotechnics, but in this case, I'm going to say like we're a week out, so if there are issues around that, we may have to think about that for the next year, but in my mind, I feel like a lot of work's been moving in this direction, there's a lot of momentum, and so I just want to appreciate all that work and also your sort of quick responses to these community concerns, which may still be concerns, but I feel like there's going to be a lot of eyes on this. I would ask that we have some cursory analysis after this is all done, an estimate of our hours and time put into an event like this, because not every nonprofit gets the same, you know, this sort of allocation of our staff time to do events necessary, and I understand there's a, you know, we're making a nexus with the airport, which is our facilities, but we can stretch that nexus to all kinds of events. So I do want to have some, you know, understanding of that post this, and we have months to do that, but those are my comments on this. I'm, you know, supportive in moving forward today, but I just wanted to make sure that we're mindful of the neighbors and mindful of, you know, the outcomes of this. Thanks Cody, I really appreciate your time working on this.
Chair Bone, could I address a couple of things?
Please.
Thank you for the comments Supervisor Wilson. We've definitely put a lot of hours into this. This is a new type of endeavor, I think, for everybody involved. I know for a fact, the last time we held an airshow at ACV, I think I was starting elementary school around that time, and certainly none of you were on the board.
I'm not sure you were born yet.
It was a while back, and I appreciate what you said in the hours, and we can certainly do that moving into next year. This being a completely new endeavor, there's a lot more hours that I've had to go into it this year than there will have to be in subsequent years. We'll have a game plan, but the post-game analysis, if you will, that you mentioned, that will begin on Monday after the show, and we'll continue to communicate both with the community in a proactive fashion and with all of you and all the parties I mentioned.
No, and I appreciate, from what I hear, there's over 5,000 tickets sold already. And I don't know if I've ever been to an airshow, and I've been to a few, I haven't been to a lot, that they haven't had fireworks to enhance the aerial airshow that goes with it. And much like's been said, it's going to be between, you know, it's going to be contained. It's not going to be like, let's celebrate the 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th, 6th, and 7th, and obviously the 22nd, because my neighbor set off two last night, I don't know, about nine o'clock, so, I'm going to buy my calendar. But anyway, what's going on here? And I think what we're doing now is we're going to be able to enhance the improvements we're making in the parking lot and the access roads that have happened up there. So people won't be as ready to drive to Sacramento to fly out, or drive to Santa Rosa to fly out, they'll stay here and we'll get those dollars, and then the sales tax dollars and everything else. I know, I know the promoter, I talked to a hotelier, that they've already taken in over $60,000 of pre-arranged rooms for the pilots and crews of the people coming in. That's 60,000 just for people coming on in to put the show on. So the TOT tax, you can do the math on that, but I mean, it's quite a deal, and the promoters, I think, and the nice thing about the guy putting it on has been, all the hours have been cut in half because the guy's putting this on, has put on numerous, puts the Capital Airshow on and things like that. So I think it's going to be something kind of fun for the community and historic. There's going to be over 50 to 60 million dollars worth of planes here. There's a couple of them that are, there's one that's worth over 10 million, there'll be MP-51s and everything. So I mean, that is our history, that's why we get to do the things we do up here today, because of what those guys did 70 years ago, so.
Yeah, thank you for that Chair Bone. If I could, just to add one more round of thanks, you triggered that. In my mind, the HLA has sponsored this in a big, big way, and I certainly appreciate their support, I know the promoter does as well, and there's been numerous businesses, you can, I won't list them all here today, but you can see it on the Rumble Over the Redwoods website, that have financially contributed to this endeavor as well, which will still lose money at the end of the day, but I think it will be a great and safe community event for everybody to enjoy.
Well, it's been good that we've had our CAO, Alicia Ejectejectays, in a position to help. You wanted a name. Supervisor Royal.
I'm sure this is one of the first things that was tackled, but because you didn't touch on it, could you, and I've had community questions about this, could you go over what the communications plan is with the Coast Guard Sector Humboldt Bay?
Yeah, absolutely. So Coast Guard Sector Humboldt Bay will actually be a part of the show. I'm sure many of you or folks listening in have seen their demonstration, their search-and-rescue demonstration. I feel like they do a wonderful job in community outreach and utilizing that. In fact, in the past several years, we've had elementary classes out and given them airport tours, showing them the specialty fire trucks and equipment we use at the airport, and the Coast Guard is always kind enough to bring a helicopter over, and that's always the highlight of the field trip, is seeing that Coast Guard search-and-rescue demonstration. So they have been for the past several months a part of the communications plan, they will be up until the game days and the post-briefs that we have thereafter to ensure that we're communicating in a way that doesn't impact their operations or any of the airline operations or other normal operators that come in and out of ACV.
So presumably if they need to launch, which takes them like 40 minutes to spin up to be prepared to launch anyway, they would communicate immediately with the, somebody would communicate with the command center and vice versa.
Yep, yeah, so.
Just be ready to go.
Yeah, sorry. There will be an air boss that will be here. Air bosses are for an airshow, what air traffic control is to our normal day-to-day airline flights across the country, but specifically for our airshow, we will have one person onsite that runs all communications. They'll have assistants next to them, including some of our staff communicating from an airport perspective. Our staff member will be right next to the air boss and coordinating for the airline operations as they're scheduled to come in, at which point we'll stop the airshow. Minutes before that, get everything clear, ensure that the runway is safe for the airline to come in, they'll come in, land, taxi to parking, and all of the airshow activities will be completely separate from the terminal. So they will not be impacted from an airline perspective. Same thing can be said if the coasties get called to an actual search-and-rescue mission or any other emergency they need to respond to, we will stop the airshow and wait for them to perform their heroic work that they do every day, so.
Will the passengers be notified that they're going to be disembarking to a crowd? They're going to feel like celebrities.
Depends on the personality of the captain and whether they want to announce that, but the folks taxiing by and sitting on the right-hand side of the aircraft will be welcomed, and those sitting on the left-hand side when they depart will also, I'm sure, have a nice wave goodbye from thousands of people, so.
Very cool, all right. Well, I think Natalie Airboss Arroyo has a nice ring to it, so.
We'll get you up there. Thank you Supervisor Royal.
If you want to name yourself, that's good. All right, with that, is there any public comment on this item? Excuse me. Supervisor Bushnell? I looked down there twice and you weren't.
Well, I was waiting for everybody else. I just appreciate that, you know, in a flat economy right now, that we're working to bring projects or things into Humboldt County that definitely will benefit businesses economically. I think that it's a good opportunity, being the first time having an airshow, and to build on that, and appreciate all the work, and appreciate the private donors.
Thank you Supervisor Bushnell.
Public comment, please.
Ken Swarovski, ditto to all the thank yous for all the people involved. This is something that's fantastic, and I think it's exactly where we 110% spending, support spending staff time on these kind of things. That's why staff's here. It's good for our economy, it's good for everybody concerned, and I did wish to make mention, I strongly support the kinetic sculpture race, it's morphed over the years. It has had no CEQA, no oversight or anything like that, like they have to go through the hoops now. That's fine, that's what happens. So anyway, whatever we can do to bring other events like this here, I'm a little sad that I can't take my two little friends to it and buy some tickets, but that's not going to happen. Thank you for doing this, for support this, thank you.
Good morning to the Chair, the Board, and I want to thank you for all you've done and your help of the county and for the veterans on the Board. I thank you for your service to the United States of America. I'm here because I heard about Rumble in the Redwoods. This isn't a new happening in Humboldt. I've taken two of my grandchildren and my child to another event similar to where they flew in some airplanes and stuff that helped me out in the war and my friends. While at this event and after the event, veterans I spoke to enjoyed the show and never said ill about having bad feelings or PTSD reactions. Many veterans remember as young soldiers in their first explosion and the bomb blasts shaking the earth and the whizz over your head. Unlike an animal, you know there is no place to run, you know the cost of freedom, unlike people who think freedom is free. The airplanes brought back memories as they flew over, the heroes in the battlefield, eliminating the enemies in front of them, and then came in behind them and eliminated the enemies behind them and making them safer. "Look, son," I told my kids, I said, "this is a fighter plane, this is a bomber. These planes brought mail to grandpa when he was in the battlefield, and I got to hear from my loved ones back home." Sharing our memories helped veterans to teach our children and families what tools we depend on in war. We veterans are learning to deal with our members, our memories. We learn and lean on each of our family's friends, counselors, and warriors who help us in the time and needs. By sharing, facing these tools of our wars with the people who we want to learn helps veterans shake his scary memories and bring back happy memories. I have the pleasure of meeting one of our own local Humboldt heroes, Mr. George Mullins from Southern Humboldt, 98 years young, a great patriot, a world hero, world renowned, author of a book called Foxhole, if you get a chance, read it. Thank you, thank you very much. When I, he was one of 10 children, he was a coal miner, his family, farmers. They left, he left school at 18 years old on October 21st, 1943, went to boot camp for 17 weeks, trained under the 101st Airborne Glider Infantry Regiment, Screaming Eagles they called themselves. On July 1944, George set out on a trip.
That's it, Bear. I'll just cut you off just like that. Thank you for your service, so.
Yeah, and thank you for all yours.
And standing up for the veterans every time.
Thank you very much.
With that, I'll bring it back. I think Michelle's words ring true, in this time of economy, this is a great thing. Mike, I understand your concerns about staff, but what this is going to do is promote our airport, and this is the time we need to promote our airport, and that's what staff's supposed to do. This is just one little way we're not having to pay to print all the paperwork. Cody, are we going to, the planes that fly in, because obviously there may be quite a few people fly in, because they get out of the heat in the valley for one, don't have to screw with the thermals. Are we parking them on the east side tarmac over there by the new hangars, or where are you planning on putting in the?
Yeah, so we are making some modifications, essentially, for those that are familiar, the general aviation apron north of where you in-plane and embark de-plane from your United or Avelo flight that the community's familiar with. Basically, that entire ramp will be utilized for the airshow. Part of it will be for a static display, the other portion, which will be completely barricaded off, will be for the live aircraft taxiing to and from the performing aircraft. As far as general aviation aircraft coming into the community just to attend the event, we have talked to quite a few of those folks, and we're having them land at Murray Field for those that are capable to keep that traffic separate from the airshow activities. As they come in before the airshow, it'll also be easier for them to get out after the airshow as well. So it's nice having that 12 miles down the road so that they can utilize that underutilized apron there and get to and from the event.
And I like how you negotiated getting a road fixed for us, so, nice job. Okay, with that, I'll bring it back. Nikki, or? I need a motion?
I'll make a motion for staff recommendation.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded.
Thank you. Supervisor Royal?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yep.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Chair Bone?
Yep.
And Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Now we will have items that are not on the agenda. Okay, you can get back up here and finish now. Sorry about that.
No, I didn't understand.
You're good, you're good.
So just do a little follow-up. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board for finding funding for, for, after the earthquake, and, I mean, the county was about the only people that even came up with any kind of funding at all, you know, the state never did, and, so we appreciate the funding that we were getting. But to that, I guess, and following up, is that I would like the Board to look a little closer on how the money's being allocated, because I don't
Us in the position that we believe that we need more local funding that cannot be taken by the state and federal governments to take care of our local needs. County is not the only one to recognize this issue. The grand jury last year issued a report that was presented to your board that said in no uncertain terms that the county needs to do more to prepare for natural disasters. Our area is just simply more prone to the impacts of these disasters because of our topography, tectonic activity, and susceptibility to sea level rise. One of the biggest takeaways from our presentation, our education out in the community is that we just simply believe that naturals, natural disasters have become an everyday part of life in the county, and we need to reorient the way that we deliver public services in the light of this new reality. For the county, we've seen most of the impacts. We felt the hardest impacts of these disasters on our roads. We believe that we need to harden our roads, and I'll leave that to Director Mattson to explain more of what that needs. But the reason that this is important is because the state and federal governments, while sometimes they can come in and provide some funding, it's not the silver bullet that some in the public may think that it is.
With that, when I started in 1998, the county was experiencing a federally declared disaster roughly every three years, usually in the tune to three to five million dollars. That was absorbable by Public Works. Our roads have never been great, but they were fair, and we were able to keep them in fair condition. Not a lot of improvements, but not a lot of degradation. Going into 2017, we got hit with a $41 million tab for road damage in that storm, followed in 2019 by another $15 million. And then from 2020 to 2024, another $15 million in damage due to three flood, federally declared disasters of floods, one state declared earthquake disaster, and our locally declared Centerville issue out at Flainer Creek. So we're currently managing five separate disasters with, with the little limited funds that we have. One of the things that we, we do is we have to front all of this money. They don't, the state or feds do not come out with a check beforehand. We have to get reimbursed after we front all the money. So that's $70 million that we basically had to front from the county, waiting for reimbursement. My deficit is generally running between five and 10 million dollars on any given day, depending upon what reimbursement checks we get. And the other issue is FEMA does not pay to improve the roads, except on very, very rare occasions. They pay to put them back the way they were. And if you put something back the way it was that got damaged in a rainstorm, likely it's, it's going to get damaged again in the future. And so we would look to, we would like to harden these sites, better retaining laws, better rock slope protection, rerouting, other things that we can do that we just can't do with the federal funding. And this is a vicious circle because we're taking our maintenance money and using it for storm damage, and then we're waiting six to 10 years to get reimbursement. So this is driving our pavement condition down as we have less money for pavement management and the regular routine maintenance on our county roads. And so go on to the next slide. Last year, you may recall, we had residents stranded for about two weeks out in Redwood Valley before we could get the roads open, and that was just a very targeted storm in the northern part of the county, not widespread over the entire county. Next slide. Next slide. So what this has done to our pavement condition index is, as you can see, most counties in the state of California are in that blue condition, fair condition. It's not the best. You really want to be good, very good, because that's your lowest operation and maintenance cost. It's like repairing your roof before your ceiling collapses into your kitchen. Our ceiling on our road system is collapsing into our kitchen. We can no longer just repair the roof. We have dropped down into the poor condition. This was projected by our consultants back in 2017 when they, we did our prior pavement management report, and that they looked at our existing funding for what we do and said, you're, you're going to keep going down. From our existing report in 2022, they are projecting that we will be in the very poor and failed condition in the next 10 years. As you can see, the six counties on the top in the green, those are all self-help counties. They have their own resources to help with their, their repairing their roads. They do not rely just on the gas tax like we have to rely on primarily. Next slide. So as you can see, a PCI of 100 is a brand-new road. PCI is a scale of zero to 100. Again, you want to be above 70 to minimize your operation and maintenance costs. Next slide. This is where we were from the late 90s up until the mid 2010s. Average condition in the, in the, in the mid 60s, still drivable roads, still salvageable roads with cracked ceiling and digouts. Next slide, please. This is where we are getting now. We are at PCI 49. This is an example of how bad the roads are getting. This is starting to require major rebuild of the entire road. Next slide. And where we are going is, you know, right now, we have projected that if we wanted to get to 70 in 10 years, and that's just a scenario, that would take $500 million investment in county road maintenance. Delaying the maintenance only increases the long-term cost from, you know, the, the slurry seal is about six times less than a rebuild of an entire road. When you look at a road and you see cracking everywhere, that means the base has failed. You can no longer just put a surface treatment on it and call it good. You need to dig out the entire roadbed and reconstruct from the beginning. And that's, this is where we're projecting. You can see on the road on the right is what I call the alligator cracking. That road is unsalvageable at this point. You have to dig it out. You have to replace the entire roadbed to get that back. If you just put asphalt on top of it, it's just going to crack and fail because the base underneath the road is cracked and failed. Back to Sean.
Last year, when your board was considering placing this measure on the March ballot, we conducted some scientific polling in the fall. This list was some of the top priorities that we found from that poll. The highlighted items are some results that we found from some informal surveys that we did on the county website through some external outreach to our, to our community. What we're finding is consistent themes that maintaining 911 response times and road repair are important themes in our community. We just did conduct more scientific polling, and I know that it seems like a lot of polling and a lot of surveying, but whenever this body looks to present a revenue measure to our community, we really want to make sure that what we're doing is in line with the community's priorities and make sure that we're hitting the mark. So we conducted more polling again recently, and we have Miranda Everett here from FM3 to go over some of those results.
Great, thanks, Sean. Should I share my screen with slides?
Yes, please.
One moment. So my name is Miranda Everett. I'm a Senior Vice President at FM3 Research. I've been with the firm for about 10 years, and I have done lots of polls with folks in Humboldt County over that time. So I'm here to provide a brief overview of what we learned from our most recent survey that was conducted just after the July 4th holiday with voters in Humboldt County. A quick note on our survey methodology here. This was done using our typical approach these days, which is sort of all of the above, ways to contact folks, text messages, phone calls to cells and landlines, and emails as well. Folks could then take the survey either live interview over the phone or online, doing sort of their own data entry. We have 649 responses here represented. They are random and representative of the demographics of the electorate we expect to turn out in November, and that gives us a margin of sampling error around 4% for the full sample, closer to 6% for places where we have sampled. So looking at the overall context in the county, one classic question we ask in many polls to just get a sense of how folks are feeling is whether they feel things are going in the right direction or off on the wrong track. And as you can see on that bar along the top of the slide, 26% say things are headed in the right direction, 47% think that they're headed off on the wrong track. That right direction number is as small as it has been in a decade. That wrong track number has been higher in the past, so there's a little more mixed feelings than we've seen. But I think this is also a trend that we're seeing across the states and actually in many places in the country, as folks are particularly concerned about the cost of living and issues like that. It kind of rolls up into this number where folks are feeling a little unsettled overall. We also gave folks a list of problems facing Humboldt County and asked them how serious is each one for you. The scale is extremely serious, very serious, somewhat serious, or not too serious a problem. And you can see there's one that is sort of far and away, two that are sort of far and away, the top concerns for about seven and 10. One, as you can see, is deteriorating streets and roads. The other is wasted inefficiency in state government. So that is something that voters really care about in, in the county right now. They're also concerned about the state and county budget deficits, about three and five or so, saying that is a top-breaking concern for them. And then lower down on the list, you can see things like the increasing severity of natural disasters or the amount you pay in local taxes, where broad shares are at least somewhat concerned. That darkest red bar of extreme seriousness is a little bit lower. And I think that presentation we just saw shows that those streets and roads are really related to natural disasters, but when you zoom out, it's the day-to-day wear and tear and the natural disasters together that are really visible in people's sort of day-to-day life when it comes to the quality of streets and roads. What's really notable here, as I mentioned, we did some polling in 2023, so just a few months back really, on some of these issues and looked at change over time, sort of apples to apples. The level of concern about streets and roads has really jumped up. It was 57% in 2023. It is now 70%. The amount you pay in local taxes, that has ticked up a bit as a concern. It's close to the margin of error for the survey, but it is very rare to see that sharp of a change on, on anything like that. So I think a notable sense here, growing in the community, that road conditions are a worsening problem. On the other side of the coin, we asked people whether they see a need to repair and maintain local streets and roads, and to do so, generating additional funding. We asked whether that's a great need for additional funding, some need, a little need or no real need. And as you can see here, 73% say there is a great or some need for additional funding. 47% see a great need for additional funding. That share, as you can see, another trend in shifts here since 2023 is that we are 10 points higher on the great need scale than we were less than a year ago, and the great and some need combined were five points higher. So increasing concern about this road conditions as a problem, as well as increasing sense that there is a great need for funding to address it. So turning to views of a ballot measure, our firm, to look at ballot measure feasibility, first step we do, and a really important one, is provide folks with something that looks a lot like what they might actually see on their ballot. So the state has laws around how that can be written, what kind of words and phrases are allowed to be in it and what are not, 75-word limit, and we provide that by phone or online to every voter because we know that is the one thing that everyone who decides on November 5th is going to see before they check yes or no. And you can see the example language here. We looked at both a half-cent and a one-cent approach. So taken together, we saw the results between the two were, were not strikingly different. So taken together, 60% say they would vote yes, 36% say they would vote no, very few, just 4% are undecided, which I think is quite notable here. And the intensity of the yes vote is stronger than the intensity of the no vote, 33 to 26. So for a measure that requires 50% plus one, you are 10 points over that, and I think that is a good sort of green light, kind of buttressed by the other findings that people see this increasingly as a problem, they see a need for funding in principle. When we put a kind of proposal for funding specifics in front of them, they are broadly So as mentioned, we have polled in the past and are revisiting in this survey responded priorities, the things that they are most interested in in terms of accountability and also how the funds are spent. When it comes to sort of accountability measures, here you can see a list of things ranked by the chair who said they would be more likely to vote yes on a measure if it included this provision. And at the very top of the list, you can see public disclosure of all spending. That is something in the measure that's highly attractive to voters. They want to understand that the money is being spent transparently in ways they can find. And then you can see the second two, also highly compelling for folks, is ensuring the county gets its fair share of state and federal funding and becoming eligible for state and federal funding as well. So that kind of nexus, as we've talked about, of disaster reimbursements and things like that, maybe a little in the weeds for the average voter, but more broadly, people do want the sense that if they're going to put up money, invest money, we should make that go as far as possible and open up those other revenue streams as well. Voters also like independent auditors, protecting the county from the impact of state budget deficits, local control also important, but really that disclosure and those matching funds are quite important for folks. Turning to how they want the money to be spent, you can see a variety of ways. We tested different words and phrases to see how we can kind of communicate the needs that folks are seeing in the community in ways that really resonate with them. So at the top of the list, creating local jobs, 81% say that's extremely or very important to them. The same share for maintaining 911 response times. And you can see a little bit lower down there, but similarly extremely or very important is maintaining response times by repairing deteriorating roads. So we know, you know, in communities, in all communities, but particularly in places with more narrow roads, more rural roads, keeping those in good condition means that those emergency vehicles can get in and out expeditiously, and that is contributing to response times. So voters really understand that. And then maintaining streets and roads to reduce the need for future repairs. You know, people understand that as owners of cars or homes or, you know, even a boat or whatever it might be, that as you keep it up and repair and good repair, then you will reduce the need for major repairs down the road. So these things are some of the things that folks especially value when it comes to this potential measure. You can see a variety of other themes on this slide, talking about evacuation routes and things like that, some other themes that majorities of folks called extremely or very important, but with just a little less intensity than the things we saw on that first slide. And then a final set of items includes improving broadly driver, pedestrian, and bicycle safety, rural farm-to-market roads, things like that are a little lower down on the list than sort of the actual how we do it, which is the maintaining of those roads. So lastly, we provided some information that helps people understand the motivation for the measure, just two to three sentences that, around different themes to see what's really resonating with folks, what's, what's matching what's on their minds and helping them understand the, the why now of it all. And here you can see that fair share message, as we shorthanded it in our analysis, is pretty compelling. 38% said it's a very convincing reason to support a measure. That is, you know, describing the theme of us being able to leverage more funds by having some of this locally controlled funding at home. The deficit message is on a similar theme. That one kind of talks about we've, we've got to keep local funding as the state faces these hard choices with the deficit coming up. And then we have one called PCI. We didn't use that term because we know it's a bit of, you know, roads, folks jargon, but telling people and reminding them as they experience in their daily life that more than 50% of county roads have been already rated poor or failed, and that the county, as has been described in our, our prior presentation, really is, is kind of struggling to even just keep up with that and repair those things. So those themes are really powerful for folks as they think about their vote. So that takes me to conclusions. I think in our full analysis of this data, we see a pathway for a general-purpose sales tax measure in November. Voters do need to have more information about it and a better understanding of how it might improve their day-to-day lives. We saw half-cent and one-cent amounts were statistically about the same, and that intensity of support really increased as voters learned more, which is a good sign that that information is helpful for them. As I've highlighted a few times here, some of the things that kind of buttress this finding is the increasing share of folks who are concerned about the state of streets and roads, as well as the increasing share who see at least some need, and in many cases a great need for additional funding for street and road repairs. When it comes to how that funding is spent, more specifically, maintaining response times, repairing local roads and bridges, and ensuring first responders have all the tools they need, that's really key for folks. And then public disclosure of funding is really key. We've seen that a lot across the state lately and saw it here in, in the county as well. And then ensuring that Humboldt County gets its fair share of federal and state funding, that's also very important to voters. So a lot of information there, but happy to take questions.
Questions, Board? I think you're off the hook for the second. Don't go anywhere.
All right, so not to PowerPoint you to death, but I do have...
Too late.
Right. I do have a couple slides that talks about our staff recommendations to help guide us in our discussion here. And let me just get to my, oh no, blue screen to death. So back in November, your board asked us to come back with some recommendations regarding whether to pursue a general... Oh! Look at that. Oh, my notes. There were a couple things from that November board item that your board directed staff to come back with. One was to recommend a general or a special tax, and we are recommending a, a one-cent general tax, primarily focused on roads and transit. Your board also asked us to differentiate between whether we should pursue a single measure for roads or to include transit and at what level of funding. And as I mentioned, we're recommending a general tax that focuses on 911 response times, roads, and transit. And there was also a directive to come back with a recommendation on how much, on whether to include cities and at what level of funding, and we are currently recommending that this remains primarily county-focused for county needs. And with that, I do have some specifics on the ordinance that we are proposing. One element that will be notable is the establishment of a citizens oversight committee. We're recommending that the audit committee be the ultimate citizens oversight, where they review the expenditures in publicly noticed meetings and report out. Before that happens, if the measure should pass, we wanted to build a lot of transparency and accountability into this measure. And so if the measure should pass, as mentioned in the staff report, we recommend establishing a work group made up of public works, representatives from transportation, board members of county staff to develop top-line allocation numbers. And then, once that funding is determined, have public works and transportation representatives go to HCOG. They have several technical committees that meet publicly, Brown Act committees, where they would go and submit their, their work plans, specifically which roads would get fixed, which bus services would, would receive fundings, and then come back to your board. And then, as I said, ultimately, this would all come back to the, to the audit committee that is staffed by the elected auditor controller, the elected treasurer, tax collector, members of your board, county administrative officer, and several citizen representatives for that citizen oversight piece to review the expenditures. So it's a lot of information, but I just wanted to pose that out there to recap and come back to your board with a report on prior directives and where we could be going in the future. With that, we'd be happy to take any questions.
Sean, just out of a question. So the 1% sales tax, that money would be siloed for the separate, so the, the committee could author, you know, we'd obviously use it on the appropriate places, but then the committee would review where we spend it, so it...
That's correct.
So there is no funding creep?
That's correct, and we would account for that separately, similar ways that we account for Measure Z.
And then I, I noticed, I started. I noticed a lot of talk about 911 emergency services and stuff. Would this be a good time to, because it happens about every 15, 20 years, would this be a good time to look at the 911 services that are provided instead of having four and having a combined, like Shascom does over in Shasta, they have, you know, Anderson, Reading Police, Sheriff, Fire, you know, Shasta City, all of those under one roof. And they're, it's a little, instead of having four local dispatch services all under one and putting everybody, is that been considered yet? Would that be part of this organization or...?
I'm, I'm not sure exactly where those discussions are. I know it's been happening for quite some time, for a decade and a half at least. As we saw in the polling, residents and likely voters are very interested in ensuring that communication systems for first responders are provided. That is not specifically spelled out in the resolution. This is a general, general tax measure, and so any revenue from the tax measure is at the discretion of your board. But if this is a specific use that your board is considering, I believe it falls in line with a lot of the spirit of the rest of the tax measure. We could certainly add some language that was tested and place that into the resolution if your board so desires.
And then transit needs would obviously have to go through, because I, we haven't seen that at HCOG for unmet transit needs and stuff like that for just the bus service. I know HTA does a really, really good job of that. We have two very able bodies on there, and they can add a route or take off, well, they take off routes if they don't meet their 10% fare box, so.
Yeah, there's, at HCOG, there are two technical committees that meet to discuss roads-related issues and transit-related issues. And so the specific project plans would go to those committees and, and open public Brown Act meetings to discuss those potential spending plans.
I'll stop now. Mic's breathing heavy over here. Next, Raj Arora.
I, I think consolidated dispatches is worth continuing to explore. There are a lot of inter-agency dynamics to work out there. I think it, it didn't pull quite as favorably, but that doesn't mean it's not worth exploring. I think, you know, folks would, would need to understand what the benefits and downsides of that are, but it's, I, I know it's come up several times recently in conversations with the sheriff's office and, and community members, an interest in that. So I remain open to seeing that. I don't think it needs to be articulated in the, in the ballot language, though, because there is such a shortage of space. I just wanted to thank you for including bus services in, in the language of the ballot measure, and I think that, that really aligns with what we saw in the, in the polling, too, and, and some of the interest and support we've heard from the community. There are people who rely on those bus services, and it's clear that folks polled really thought that, you know, low-income individuals and people living with disabilities and seniors in particular were, were top of mind for, and kids using the bus to get, public bus to get to and from school, which is a reality for many youth, particularly high schoolers in our community. So I just really appreciate that, and I think that, you know, that makes perfect sense, and I'll continue to support that. It's also consistent with our regional transportation plan and the goals that are set there, regional targets for increasing transit trips and reducing vehicle miles traveled. So I just want folks in the public to know that that's, you know, on our minds as we're considering this language and, and, you know, it's a, I, I can also say that, you know, I, I lived in Petrolia when, when the Wildcats slid out in 2006. I'm sure Tom remembers that fondly. And it was scary. I was really poor at the time, and I really needed to get to town for basic goods and services, and I didn't have the opportunity to live elsewhere at that time in my life. So I, you know, I, my heart goes out to folks who are in that situation as well. So I, I think this strikes a good balance between those needs, and just want to appreciate that there's been a lot of robust community conversation. I think we do have some things to work out as we move forward with this, and, but we, we are committed to investing the time to continue those conversations and make good collaborative decisions.
Raj Wilson?
I have a couple questions in that, for me, I have some, have some discussion after public comment. On the PCI by county ranking, do we have any cons, any understanding of, of where that compares to miles per population? It would seem to me probably that that would make a pretty significant impact in that ranking.
It's more related to the population and the registered vehicles. So the more rural counties like ours, like...
So the more rural counties like ours, Lake County, Del Norte, most of the gas fund, tax funding we get comes through that formula that's heavily weighted to registered vehicles. And so it, it's, it really boils right down to the number of registered vehicles. The amount of road miles, yes, that's important, but it's, it's pretty consistent per population in the rural areas. So we can't really just look at the road miles itself and say, you know, that's, that's the cause of the problem. It, it really boils down to how the funds are divvied up by the state. And changing those formulas is a very, very scary thing because of the, the, the age we live in, of everybody wanting everything and not wanting to share. So that, that's where I'm going with that right now, is, you know, if I look at LA County, they have 3,200 miles of, of road, but they have a significantly larger budget. Trinity, I think, has somewhere around 600 miles of road. And they're, they're, they have problems just like we do. And these are resource miles, they're, they're, you know, our ag lands, our production lands that, that these roads serve.
Okay, and it, it's getting to the place where it almost feels like natural disasters are just nature these days. I mean, it's just becoming what we're, what we're, the status quo for us. And I know that oftentimes I get constituents that, you know, want road repairs, and we do our best to do that, and they'll say, I have these potholes that need to be dealt with. And then, as you know, we'll, we'll get in there, fix those roads, and then in the next week, the calls will come in, hey, can you put in some speed bumps? Everyone's driving too fast. Happens a lot, I mean, almost every time. And so what would be the mechanism? I mean, I know this is, this is really framed around 911 response times, but so many of our 911 calls are related to traffic accidents, and the severity of those go up with the speed by which people drive. And so how do we get less 911 calls in terms of like the design of our, as we move forward in, in these roads? And where, in terms of like, especially within communities that are maybe have more population in them, where there's more people walking, biking, riding horses, those, so there's a lot more sort of multimodal interface with, with the roads we're talking about? Where, where in this process will we make sure that we're not just making fast roads, but we're making safe spaces?
We are not applying for a whole lot of federal grants that we could right now that really are targeted for that. That's in that, that slide about the, the getting our fair share, because we don't have the local match. So we have some projects, we have a lot of concepts that we can't bring down the fund. There's certain things we can do with, with maintenance itself if we're paving or chip ceiling long strips of road. But when we dive right down into the middle of a community in a big project, like we have a big project for Redwood Drive in Garberville that's going into final design next year, a lot of that is the feedback from the community about making it a place, not a pass-through. And that's what needs to happen, and a lot of our communities that, you know, they're, they're, they're treated as pass-throughs with either the state highway or the county road, not a place to stop and slow down. Yes, it's important to, to, for emergency vehicles to be able to go fast, but it's also important that within communities, people are driving appropriate for the community. And being able to have funds to leverage those kind of projects is really, would be advantage. You know, to back up just a little bit, you know, going into 2017, I had a million-dollar reserve every single year for storm damage. And then we would use that at the end of the year for certain, you know, projects. We can no longer do that. We no longer have those funds available. So, you know, looking at leveraging outside funds for communities with this money would be, you know, one of my goals.
Yeah, it is, it is a bit of a paradox there, where folks are like, I want my street to be slow and safe, but I want to be able to get to wherever I want to get to as quickly as possible. And so we're always in that, trying to balance those, I guess, you know, those, those requirements or requests from the, from the public. And so, well, that's I have for comps, but I really want to get back to where is the, the feedback loop in this process? I want to go back to Measure Z for a second, because it, as clunky as we might imagine it to be, it is one of the most transparent processes in the state of California for local funds that have, you know, that have been derived through one of these ballot processes. And, and everyone's got criticisms of it, and that's kind of a good thing, in that, in that it's just extremely transparent. I'm hoping that we have something similar in this case, and I think that the polling shows that's where people kind of are wanting it to go. So in, in the, in this issue around design and safety, where would that, that part of the feedback loop occur?
So I will note that in the resolution, there is specific language in there that talks about providing safe routes. And that's intended to be some of the safety measures that, that you're talking about. Also in our staff recommendations, if, will we be able to share the screen there? So this is the citizen oversight function that I was talking about. We want to carry on that tradition of providing a lot of transparency and accountability. That point number two, where these project plans are presented to HCOG in their public meetings, staff recommendation is to provide, ensure that somebody representing the, the members with disabilities would be on those committees to ask these questions and make sure that these projects have appropriate safety measures included in them.
Okay, great. I just wanted to be, make sure that that was put out here before we get public comments, so people can, you know, let, let us know what they feel about that. That's all I have for now for my, sort of my questions about where we're going with this, and I'm happy to discuss more after public.
Supervisor.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I want to thank Deputy Director Sean Quincy and Director Tom Mattson and other folks, including our consultants that did a lot of the polling, as well as other members of the community that really engaged and brought input to us and all the hard work you've done to try and get us to this point. The, you know, there's an old adage, right? An ounce of prevention, or an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And I think that's exactly what we're looking at here. According to state data, the average car owner is spending $900 a year on car repairs, tires, rims, shocks, you name it, due to the poor condition of roads. $900 a year on average. And I think we all know that, when you get a brand-new set of tires and you hit a big pothole, there goes your rim, or there goes your alignment, suddenly you're spending more money. So I think the polling data shows this very clearly when it went up to 70% support, likely support for road improvements, road maintenance, and all these kinds of things. So that really helps validate that. I also want to say that, you know, I think Measure Z, we perhaps overcommitted or overpromised what it might do. We all thought that it might cover all the public safety issues, and roads are clearly one of those public safety issues. But it really wasn't enough to do all that. I think people are very happy with the improvements in staffing at the sheriff's office in terms of deputies on the streets and response times and all that. Also the funding for fire services. I mean, especially at a time that our volunteer fire departments have really been struggling. And the funding that comes in through that, through the Fire Chiefs Association and other mechanisms has been a godsend, frankly, for our communities. And, you know, this roads measure, once passed, will take some pressure off of Measure Z. And that pressure relief could equate to more support for fire services or other public safety measures. So I think that's a good thing. And also, as Director, as Supervisor Wilson said, I think Measure Z is phenomenal around the state in terms of its transparency. And I think we can very much look the voters in the eye and say, we didn't spend a dime of it on general fund expenditures, even though that's allowed in these general ballot measures. We didn't do that. We stayed true to the goal of the measure, which was a lot of different public safety improvement. So that's the same with this. I think we're setting up a, a system here for accountability to make sure that we not only spend the money appropriately, but that we continue to hear the public's input on how, how that funding should be spent. And I believe in the ad hoc work that we did, I also want to thank Supervisor Bushnell, as one of the members of the ad hoc, for her hard work. You know, we all worked together on this in, in many ways. But, you know, I believe the ballot measure that was shown was not the final that we actually agreed to. It still had the word "maintain bus services" in there, and I think we changed it to "bus services." Now, you know, as far as how the process works for transit, for those that aren't quite aware, there is these transit funds that are allocated out of HCOG. And then there is this unmet transportation needs public hearing process that occurs where the community can weigh in on unmet needs. And we often hear about evening runs, weekend runs, more often runs, things like that. And there's a process, as you mentioned, with some committees, that, technical committees, that look at those unmet needs and make decisions about, are they meetable? And it usually comes down to finances and share, you know, the fare box and things like that. So there can sometimes be unmet needs, and yet there isn't enough money left over in the transit account to put the money to that. Maybe there's $300,000 left, but it's not enough to add a route or a run or whatever. And only then does that excess money become available to roads. It's not like roads is in there trying to siphon away the money or anything like that, as has been mentioned. There's a process that we go through at HCOG to determine how that money will be spent. But bottom line is, this roads measure has in it bus services. And the bus services right now are supported, 40% of the funding for that, for our transit, is state grants. What if that's not maintained? What if that goes away? We're going to need something to help back up and maintain those services, let alone the interest in trying to enhance services to help with our climate needs, the fact that transportation is a major emitter, and all the other things that we've talked a lot about. So I think it's great that we, as an ad hoc, have approved a recommendation to this board for a, a final ballot measure that doesn't have "maintain" in there, that has "bus services." So am I correct in that, Sean? So that was not our final ballot measure that was shown up there on the, on the screen?
That's correct. That was the original question that we proposed to voters, or likely voters
Perfect.
in the poll. But we have slightly tweaked that question that's in your packet. And if, if you want, we can, we can present it on the screen as well.
If necessary, we can do that. But I just wanted to make the point that we have eliminated the word "maintain" so that we can have the options to enhance if the funding is available. So I just wanted to make that point as well. And I'm hoping it's called Measure R. You know, marketing is everything in this world, right? And, but we'll see how that works out at the elections office, et cetera. Those are my comments at this point. Thank you.
Supervisor Bushnell?
I'm gonna wait until after public comment.
Supervisor.
Thank you. I just wanted to note that that point about matching funds, local match, is so critical. I had the opportunity, you know, in a prior life, to work closely with Tom and Public Works on grant proposals for the county to do some really amazing transportation safety and transportation access projects, and that local match is really hard to come by. And you can't use state match to match a state grant. But there is a lot of funding out there that we, we have access to. And I think, you know, we need to have capacity to put together those applications, too. But that is a great way of bringing existing funds to our community that otherwise would be awarded somewhere else. So I think that's a really key point. And, you know, I'll just note that it is our board's opportunity, working closely with our staff, to, you know, determine what our policies related to road safety and design are. So we'll have that opportunity moving forward as well to ensure that projects meet, you know, safe standards.
Supervisor Wilson?
I know, I know there's discussion about dispatch in 911. I, I'm just gonna, I, I'm not there yet. And I have to tell you, I've been a big supporter of upgrading our dispatch and radio services connectivity, and I still am, and I was, you know, I'm just not sure that this is the revenue stream that addresses that. So we can have those conversations later, but I, I'm, I'm not there. I want to go back to both the transit and, and the, the road conversation sort of bit. Is that, what we're really talking about is the servicing of vulnerable populations, and elders, youth, students, people with disabilities, those, those populations. What we find is when we focus in those spaces, is that it really helps everybody. We, as a nation, we found this out in around ADA, and how it really helped us evolve and create just better facilities for everybody. So keeping on that focus and that train in terms of, of trained thought around transit and these improvements is going to be really important for me, so that's, that's where I'm at. Thanks.
Well, I thought before we, and Tom, I've, I've got to ask, as we move forward and we're changing to electric buses, hydrogen buses, but mainly electric cars that are way about 20, 20, 22% on average, you know, a lot of them more than a regular gas-fired engine from everything I can see back and, and what I've looked up. The extra weight set on four wheels, just like instead of being spread out over two axles, three axles, four axles, doesn't that increase the wear and tear on the roads? Because I know we just went through a, we just went through paying for a tire on a Tesla on a pothole I drove through the day before, and it wasn't that bad, but it raised hell with the Tesla because of the added 2,100 pounds, so.
Yes, every pound you add causes more damage on the road. Realistically, it's the big rigs that cause the most damage. But even the big pickup trucks and electric vehicles are definitely heavier. The electric buses, they had issues, I think, with the hydrogen ones, where they couldn't make them meet the legal weight and had to get exceptions for those. So as the vehicles get heavier, yes, we have to build the roads stronger.
Okay, because as we move forward to the 2035, 45, 0, we're going to have to provide ways for those people to drive on. You know, even if we change the, the outlook of what the cars are they drive. All right, with that, I'll open it up to a public comment. Hi, Sonny.
Sonny Anderson, resident of Petrolia since 1973. Been driving on those roads forever, and I just want to say, I remember when Measure Z first got presented to the board with the same kind of conversation. Roads, roads were on the top of the list of the need. Below that was the sheriff's department maintaining that, emergency services. And ends up, it's a big battle every year to try to get Measure Z money for the roads. And normally we're at the bottom of the list, and maybe at the end we'll get something. So I'm hoping that this measure, that's supposedly roads again, like Measure, Measure Z was, roads, will truly be about the roads. And not, you know, it's a big mistake putting the nine, I agree with you on the 9/11. It shouldn't be even put in there, because what's going to happen, the sheriff's department is going to be coming in, the fire department's going to be coming in, it says 9/11 response times. That means we get some of the money, too. I want this measure rode up to where it is focused on the roads and transit. I think it should be maintaining the transit, whatever, at least roads should be specific on it. And you mentioned like, oh, we're worried about people speeding down the highway. Well, that's not the case, and, and we need speed bumps. That's true maybe close to communities. On the Wildcat, that's not true anywhere, you know? We need a safe road for the livestock trucks, for the ranchers to get the trailers in and out of the valley, and for the safety for me to pull out of the way, have enough room to pull out of the way when some idiot is in my lane, you know, which is not uncommon. The roads have improved. The county does a, has done a great job with the limited amount of money they have. But we're going to pass this measure, there should be something specific exactly where it's going to go. Label it Measure R for the roads, so the voters know the money is going to go to the roads. And I think really with the inflation the way it is, has strapped this, people off of money, I would encourage more of a half-cents tax, going strictly to the roads and maintaining transit myself, you know? Would be more likely to get voters to vote on it. Because Humboldt County now, because of the Eureka Tax, which goes to roads, it's, it's higher than anywhere else in the state. So I think there's going to be a lot of reluctance on getting a one-cent tax, and, but I think a half-cent will have an easier way to pass. Thanks a lot for your, the ladies doing the polling and everything up. That was excellent job on that. But I'm really firm about, it has to mention roads as a. But I'm really firm about it has to mention roads as a priority. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sonny.
I'm Colin Fisk, speaking on behalf of CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities, and our more than 700 members and supporters. No one who's familiar with local streets and roads would deny that there is a need for investment for maintenance and repair, as well as for safety improvements. Similarly, I think no one who's familiar with the local transit system would deny that there's a need for investment in the transit system. I think contrary to popular opinion, not everyone in Humboldt has a car or can drive one. A lot of people can't drive because of age or disability, or because they can't afford it. And by our calculations, at least 15,000 adults in the county don't actually have a driver's license. So you can be sure that a lot of those people, plus a lot of others, rely on public transit to meet at least some of their needs, or those needs just aren't being met. It's our obligation as a community to ensure that community members can meet basic needs. That means access to groceries and healthcare and education and employment. And that means not just roads, but also high-quality public transit. Transit is also critical, as you've heard, for the county to do its share in the global fight against climate change. And in recognition of that fact, the regional transportation plan calls for doubling transit ridership by next year, and then doubling it again by 2030, and again by 2040. And those things are really necessary, but the county, despite, you know, signing off on this as part of HCOG, really hasn't put resources towards it yet. I also want to make another important point. The Humboldt Transit Authority is an extremely effective and efficient agency, and it provides critical service that a lot of folks enjoy riding, including me. But for an agency that serves such a large county, it has a small budget. Every year, as you heard, riders report unmet transit needs to the agency, and every year many of them can't be met either because there's not enough funding or because there's strings attached to that funding. HTA's budget is almost entirely state and federal funds, and that funding has conditions. It could easily be cut in a tough budget year or under an unfriendly administration, and both of those things are very real prospects, I think we can see right now. So if we really value transit service, and if we want to respond to those local needs, and if we want to make sure that we keep providing transit going into the future, and that we keep our promises to increase and improve it, we really need that reliable and significant source of local funding. So I want to offer my sincere thanks, both to supervisors and staff, for the fact that transit service is included in the ballot measure language, and also that transit representatives will be included in the work group to recommend how the money gets spent. It's critically important that you follow through on those promises and dedicate a substantial proportion of the revenue to transit if the measure passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Wheeler, Executive Director of EPIC. First off, I'd like to thank Sean for working with us, meeting numerous times to discuss our concerns and work to resolve them. Simply put, the county has more roads than it has revenue to maintain, and now we're considering a new tax measure to maintain those roads. Eureka voters, like myself, would be taxed at 2.0, 10.25%, and Arcade voters would be taxed at the same rate should their tax measure, which is also on the ballot, pass. For residents of these incorporated jurisdictions, a road tax that just pays for county roads offers little promise for us. Yet, these same urban voters are going to be required for a tax measure like this to pass. Environmental voters are also concerned. Transportation is the largest category of greenhouse gas emissions. To reduce those emissions, the Draft Climate Action Plan and our Regional Transportation Plan both recognize the necessity of increasing public transit use. This requires additional investment. To resolve these concerns, we ask the board commit to an equitable distribution of tax revenue between road maintenance and public transit. Again, thank you to Sean and county staff for working with us to ensure that this gets into the draft language. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Beth Burks. I'm the Executive Director of the Humboldt County Association of Governments, and I just wanted to weigh in a little bit to offer some information about specifically the committees we have at HCOG, since it's, it's been posed by staff that, that some of this oversight could flow through HCOG, which I think would, would work well, given the structure we have. So first is the Technical Advisory Committee. This is formed by the Public Works Directors of the, all of the cities and the County Public Works Directors, in addition to four active tribal nations that are voting members of that committee. So that's really focused on, they make all, you know, financial decisions for the, or recommendations for the funds that are flowing through HCOG that get distributed to the jurisdictions, and some also related to transit. Then we have another committee, the Social Service Technical Advisory Committee, and this is really focused on transit, and it's made up of some statutorily required membership, which includes the senior population, people with disabilities, those that, service providers for people with disabilities, and seniors. Paratransit and transit are all represented on that committee. And that's the committee that oversees the unmet transit needs process, that I think Supervisor Madron, you know, summarized very well. And I will say, so, so just about those committees, you know, we're happy to have, have it flow through there. I'd be happy to continue working with staff to figure out, you know, exactly how that would work. They are Brown Act committees, and we'd certainly be willing to, you know, advertise more than we do. We do all the standard postings, but I will say, you know, we don't get a whole lot of attendance at those meetings, but they are open, they're, they're hybrid. You can attend by Zoom, you can attend in person, and certainly, you know, if we were holding a decision on this measure in the future, we'd be happy to make sure that that was well advertised and people knew where to show up to, to make their voice heard. And then just a little bit about the unmet transit needs. Again, I think Supervisor Madron very accurately identified, you know, what we hear over and over again every year when we go out on those processes, you know, we make presentations at all of the city governments, including, and also the county. We also do a lot of independent outreach through different events, and, and we hear over and over again that later night service, more frequency of service, a Sunday service, having an express service from McKinleyville all the way to College of the Redwoods. And we have a transit development plan that gets updated every five years. And if we were to add all those extra services, transit would need, you know, not, not just to maintain where they're at, but they need an additional 2.7 million a year, about, to, to add the services that are discussed in the transit development plan. So I just wanted to give you a sense of where we're at with that. We have a lot of information related to this. I'm happy to, you know, share that in any way that would be valuable and just, you know, happy to be a resource if you need further information.
Thanks, Sean.
Good morning. My name is Alexandra Profant. I'm a superior claimant to two parcels in this county, which are not being recognized right now due to title theft. However, that's not what I want to comment on. I would suggest regarding this agenda item that, first of all, Humboldt County, I always joke about, is being famous for its potholes. We have traffic calming designed into our roads because people actually slow down when there are potholes, which I find interesting and both amusing. I've got two really important points to make on this, if this is gonna go to the ballot. That is, first of all, the Northwest Integrated Regional Management Plan, which is being considered right now by BLM. If you have not considered making a formal comment to them, I know that there's a proposed comment or a opportunity to comment based on opposing the plan. They have, under Title 16, conservation protection for food security. Part of conservation activities involve rangeland and grassland in agricultural purposes relative to food security, which leads to my second point. All of these issues are planning issues, transportation planning in particular. There is a way for rural situations to actually host metropolitan planning organizations, but you'd have to work with other people. The key to Humboldt County is our historic resources. If you added to the language, instead of a use tax, a historic use tax, and actually had John Ford host a historic resources survey, we happen to have very historic bridges here. Fern Bridge, obviously, being one. Another that many of you don't know about, out in Petrolia, was designed by John Alexander Low Waddle. He is considered the father of civil engineering. His first bridge was the Halsted Street Bridge in the city of Chicago. That bridge alone would help solve your problems if you added historic to the use tax language. Because if we did a historic resources survey and actually called out all of our local bridges as relates to freight and food security, we would be out in front of this state for transportation funding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dylan Fearben, community member. I just wanted to touch on a little bit with that, as far as the number of projects that it potentially fund, 911, roads, transit. I think what happens is, if you look at those numbers, if those numbers are accurate, Sean, about you're estimating 24 million on 1%. You divide that up over that, and 500 million in 10 years, numbers aren't gonna get there, right? We're not gonna get that number to where we want to show significant improvement. And unfortunately, I think when people see their tax dollars or increase in any kind of tax, they want to see something that they can actually point to and see some improvement there. So I think limiting, you know, if it's just roads and showing some improvement on that where you can point to it and they can see it specifically, it will help. Additionally, Supervisor Madron, you had a good point in the fact that, you know, $900 to tires, realignments, showing people numbers. So I'm, I'm an accountant, I used to be an accountant, so numbers are the thing. Okay, well, if half a percent tax or even a whole percent tax on your sales tax, most people, that's gonna be a few hundred dollars a year. Well, $900 is gonna probably be more than that. So if you show them, you're actually gonna save money potentially and buy less, you know, less repairs, less maintenance on certain vehicles, you're more likely to probably grasp that there. If people hear tax, they instantly know, because you're taking money from them. But if you can show them where, on average, we actually can save you money by this and market it that way, I think you're gonna have a better response by showing that. Showing them what it's gonna cost them by increasing that tax, half percent, 1%, whatever it may be. But unfortunately, if we have too small of a pie and it's divvied up too much, you're never gonna gain enough traction to show people that the money is working, right? So we have to be able to be focused enough and start one at a time. Start with what we think is the most important, work our way down. To the gentleman's point that he said, going out to Petrolia, road's very rough. I went out there for a family barbecue out in Bear River. My little girl, in her car seat, 10 months older, head's bouncing around left and right, trying to keep her asleep on the way out there, trying to drive in the middle of the road, try to avoid the bumps, the washouts. Those roads aren't even safe for speed limits. Your tires will chatter going around a corner. When your tires chatter, the vehicle's gonna move. If somebody's coming around that corner with a stock trailer, then you're gonna have a big issue. So those types of things, you know, we definitely need to, as I said, be pointed when it comes to that, and make sure that people understand, okay, what is the tax going to take out of their pocket? What could they potentially save by limited repairs on those as well? Market it and show them the numbers. That way, they're probably more likely to support it, as opposed to, hey, we're gonna tax you more. When people hear that, they're gonna shut it down. No way, I'm out. Right? So if you can show them that, show them the proof of what you're trying to do, and then we target it to a specific thing, make some progress, then it'll allow, like I said, Measure Z to open things up and to be able to do more and cover all things more encompassing. But I think just being targeted and showing people that we're doing what we say we're gonna do, and actually showing them some numbers to back it up will be a big benefit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Swatzky, my hat says, make Blue Lake okay again. Let's pretend it says Humboldt County Taxpayers League. Humboldt County Taxpayers League is considered to be non-functional, but we are gonna play in this particular forum. This may be our last time, due to the efforts of people like Rex Bone and many people who belong. We have a significant work chest sitting there. We would like to support your tax. It's a great honor and privilege to announce today that yesterday I have worked out a deal with Trinidad. We will be supporting their tax poll. I'm willing to go to their meetings, I'm willing to go lobby with people, and I'd be, love to be able to do the same thing with Humboldt County and endorse your tax. So here, here's what our request would be, and I am speaking for the Humboldt County Taxpayer League as Executive Director, that you have two taxes here, one being a specific tax of a quarter cent to qualify us as a self-help for things. That's, that's the best we can do with that one. Strictly for road maintenance. That's what you have to do to get your best benefit out of your money, your best matching funds, best everything. That I will stand for, and I will support 100% and lobby for, go out with Jeff Hunterlock, go to all the meetings you want to go to, and, and put some of our money probably into supporting this for advertising or whatever. The other quarter percent, and I, I, I would like to see you have strictly a half cent sales tax total. Don't get greedy on this one. Two years from now, you can add to it if it's accessible, but if you, if you take a chance and you kill it, then you got nothing in the meantime. Same as what happened, I think, six years ago, when HCOG put one forward and you've got, haven't got a cent out of that because they went a half cent sale tax rather than a quarter, which I would have passed. Specific taxes take, at this time, I believe, 66%. Of course, there's a ballot measure, I believe, on there that that's lower down to 55% if that passes with the state. I'm not supporting that particular thing. I like the 66. Does improve your odds greatly, and most likely it will pass. I'm totally confident we can get you probably in around 70% on this thing if we work together on it. The other quarter cent, go into your general fund. I strongly support using that as appropriate. I strongly support transit getting a good share of that money to satisfy their needs. Very simple formula, two taxes. You're not putting all your eggs in one basket. It's kinda like Siamese twins, you're cutting them in half, both of them are gonna live, hopefully, or if one doesn't, you're gonna have one. So I highly recommend you take Humboldt County Taxpayers League recommendation on this, and we look forward to, to working with you 100% to pass that tax. And I won't any, write any opposition to the other quarter cent sales tax, even though we might not totally support that regarding the transit, general taxes we generally don't support, because, well, we don't trust government all the time, how things are spent. I say that. Look forward to working with you potentially, and thank you for my opportunity to speak today.
All right. With that, I will, uh-
We have, we have callers in the queue.
Do you have a caller?
Yeah, we have, at this point, we have four callers. Caller 0920, star six to unmute, and you'll have three minutes. Caller 0920, thank you.
Yes, okay. My name's Martha Walden. I just want to say I'm glad to hear that public transit will get a portion of the revenue from the road tax, and I want to urge you to make sure it's a significant portion. Even in a rural county like ours, public transit has an important role to play, especially as Humboldt's population grows. Eureka and Arcade and McKinleyville in particular are gonna grow and become denser because of all the development on the peninsula, plus the expansion of the university, plus people are just gonna want to live here to take refuge from the inland heat. And, and we have to get ready for that, for when a lot of people will take the bus, not just disabled and other vulnerable people. I, I know all of you already understand how crucial it is to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. So obviously, to make these reductions significant, have to make big changes. But investing in change can be difficult because the status quo tends to absorb all the resources. So we're in a dangerous spot here with greenhouse gases building up in the atmosphere. And to really help with disaster preparedness, please insist that public transit gets a decent percentage of the money. We really must invest in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next, we have caller 2466, star six to unmute, and you will have three minutes.
Hi, this is Wendy Ring. I'm a retired physician and public health professional, and I, I also really strongly support sharing this revenue with, with transit. Transit is a health issue. Just to start with a story, I was sitting in a physician's office in a waiting room last year, and a guy came in and he had missed his appointment. He'd taken, he had spent more than an hour on our public transit. It involved several transfers, and, and the receptionist said, sorry, we can't see you, and he had to, you know, go take that ride again, and he didn't get any healthcare. And if you look at statistics going up to a more macro level of people, of people who live in areas with poor transit, about 20% of them for GoHealthcare, and about, and about 10% of missed appointments are because of, of, of lack of transit, a lack of transportation to the doctor's office. So that's on the, on the bad side. The other is, is that when we hire transit, it's not door-to-door, and it increases visible activity. Back in 2019, when we were starting, talking about the Climate Action Plan, I did some calculations using a model that CDPH has where you can play with different transportation mixes. And if we had doubled transit then, which was, which is HCOG's plan for 2025, we would, we would have saved $100 million by 2030 in a combination of health savings and economic development. On the climate side, we all know this increased frequency of natural disasters we've been talking about is caused by global heating, and cars in Humboldt are the major source. So, you know, to paraphrase an old adage, when you're in a pothole and you can't get out, the first thing you need to do is stop digging. So HCOG has great transit goals. It can't get there without more funding. So we aren't, we aren't gonna be able to decrease our vehicle miles traveled unless we can get- get not just people who are dependent now on transit, but people who are driving out of their cars and onto buses. So thank you so much for including transit, and please make sure that they get a good share.
Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next caller is 4756, star six to unmute, and you'll have three minutes. 4756, star six to unmute.
Hi there.
Hello.
Hi, I'm the Director of the North Coast Environmental Center. I want to add my voice to the chorus thanking you for including transit funding in the ballot measure. And I also want to urge you, if it passes, to make sure that there are dedicated seats on the Oversight Committee specifically for transit users and assets. Improving bus service was a priority expressed by the community in your polling, and it's really critical that the county actually follows through with significant transit funding to make that happen. And utilizing the existing HCOG committees is a really great idea. I don't know if any of you all ride our local buses, but a lot of different people use transit. And many of them do it because they don't have any other options. It's either due to economic situation, health issues, or age. And sales taxes by nature are regressive, meaning that they affect lower income and fixed-income people more by taking a larger portion of their income. Low-income people should not bear the burden of a sales tax without benefiting. Using this tax to provide more funding for transit can be an equitable solution. Also, when you have more people riding buses, that means fewer individual cars on the road, which can actually increase safety on the road. And as I said, mentioned, the county can't meet its obligations to reduce climate pollution without investing more in transit. In May, the county released the Climate Action Plan Survey in which people could choose various options to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. It was kind of like a game where you could choose certain actions and see how much those would reduce emissions. According to the latest Emissions Inventory, transportation makes up nearly two-thirds of our emissions countywide. And in the survey, by choosing to increase transit use by relatively small percentages in the urban and rural areas, that actually equaled really significant decreases in countywide emissions. But in order to increase ridership, we need more frequent buses, and in order to have more frequent buses, there needs to be dedicated funding. So this is an opportunity to improve people's lives as well as to make significant steps towards meeting climate goals. So thank you for including transit in the measure. We'll also need you to follow through to be sure that increased bus services actually happen. So please make sure that there are dedicated seats on any Oversight Committee for transit users. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have 6127, star six to unmute, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Thank you very much. My name is Dan Chandler, and I also want to thank you for including transit services. This has been a matter of discussion for a long time. As a member of 350 Humboldt, we've expressed our opinions on it, and we're very gratified that it looks like it's going to happen. I also wanted to share, I think, our puzzlement. We all have been aware of the 113-degree temperatures. My daughter drove up from LA and it was 113 degrees. This was three weeks ago, and it's still going on. And of course, we've only heated the earth by 1.2 degrees Celsius so far, and we're on track for 3.5. So my puzzlement is why people aren't more interested in this. And to bring it back to your hearing, until the other speakers started talking, I really didn't have any sense whatsoever that climate change and what we're going to need to do to make a difference was a matter that people were concerning. I really feel like it should be the context for every decision we make, because every decision we make now is going to have really big ramifications in the next 30 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Chair, that's the last of our callers.
Thanks, Nikki. Bring it back to the board. Supervisor Royal.
Thank you. My heart is very full hearing all the support for transit, and I know that Greg Pratt, the Humboldt Transit Authority General Manager, is also here. If there are any questions from the board related to transit. And I also want to note that, you know, I hear the urge to continue making it a priority to meet our regional transportation plan goals and to, you know, really work towards meeting those unmet transit needs that come up every year but are not yet reasonable to meet, in part due to funding. And I also want to urge people to use our existing transit system. It's pretty great for such a rural community. We have a pretty phenomenal transit system that serves many parts of our community with frequent service, and we are always working to make it better, but it is a fantastic system as it stands.
Supervisor Madron, then Bushnell.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say, Sonny, our ad hoc and our team of people also share the concern about how this ballot measure is worded in regards to whether or not it would open the door for a lot of money to be siphoned off to other purposes. And that's why we very carefully worded the ballot language to where the issue of 911 response, preparing for disasters and all this, is related to taking care of the roads. It's not that those things would be separate items to be funded, per se, but that it's related to taking care of the roads. So I think we've worked really hard to try and come up with language that will focus this money on the roads as much as we can without earmarking it, because you can't do that unless you're doing a 67 percent special tax. The other issue that was brought up was the issue of the, I think it's called, it used to be called A1C1, now it's A1C10. And there has been a change in that, in that, yes, for certain things, it would reduce the level of passage to 55 percent, but the rewording of the language of that bill eliminated these kinds of taxes. They would not, even if it passes, this tax, if it were a special tax, would still need 66.7 percent in order to pass. So while we thought that might have been a neat option at one point, it no longer is, and I appreciate you, Sean, staying up with the legislative changes to keep us informed on that one. So anyway, just a couple of responses to comments that I've heard. The last thing I will say is that thank you for being here today, folks, and those online. Our team of folks, Sean and Tom and various supervisors, are doing road shows. We're going to chambers of commerces, we're going to city councils, community service districts, and laying out a lot of what was presented here today, plus other details, to try and really bring the message forward to the community about the need for this funding. And when you think about the leverage component, the amount of money this will raise when passed and leveraging to an 80 percent match with the federal government is massive. A general tax like this does not qualify us for the state self-help category, but that's a really small pot of money, a million or two. Whereas the federal matching, 20 percent of our money that we don't even have right now at all, but this would give us to an 80 percent match, is really the big game in town. So please share with your friends, family, and other community members the importance of this tax measure, because it really is going to come down to the voters deciding. And yes, it relies on people in cities to vote for it, and some would say, well, they're going to be paying for roads they don't use, but everybody uses county roads. No matter whether you live in a city like Arcade or Eureka or anywhere else, we all use the county road system. So I hope that people understand that, just like many people in the county come in to shop in the cities, and that sales tax goes to the cities. It's a community, including all the cities in the county, and we're going to need everybody's support to really get this over the finish line. So thanks for your part in this educational campaign. Appreciate it.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you. I want to thank Sean and Tom and for all the work that's been done. Nobody likes taxes. Nobody wants to pay more taxes, especially, you know, we've talked a lot about economy today. My husband is, like, not very happy. He is going to vote for this because we live on a rural road system. One thing about this tax that I do like is that the tourist community coming in, everybody that comes into Humboldt County, if they spend a dollar on something that's taxed and they also are traveling our roads, then they are going to be helping to maintain our roads. I appreciate the conversations around public transit and the value that that does bring to alleviate some of the uses for roads, and it's very necessary when you are talking about transportation and roads and maintenance. So I think all the public commenters, I think there's been a lot of work done around this in the last eight months, and like Supervisor Madron said, we've gone to a bunch of the road shows. In general, people are favorable for the tax, even though they don't like taxation. It's better than a bond that would go on to homeowners. People are kind of bonded out right now. And so I do hope the community sees the value and realizes that, as some of the public commenters said, a quarter percent, half percent, or a percent, you really have to really get that bang for that buck to make it show a difference, and that's what people want to see. And so I hope that this board sees a path forward for this measure and that we can see the gain, starting hopefully next year.
John, then Supervisor Royal.
Thank you, Chair. And I just want to say thank you to the board for allowing us the additional time necessary to conduct this public outreach and do a lot more research with the community and do a lot more touches with them in education. It appears to be sinking in. We appear to be connecting with something in the community. I do want to note on the exclusions, to your point, Supervisor Bushnell, that the local sales taxes are not applied to groceries sold as food, prescription drugs, medical and dental services, real estate, diapers, feminine hygiene products, education, or rent. And I do want to also note before we get to a motion, there are a couple of technical changes that I would request to be included in the motion. The resolution references Exhibit A when it's talking about the ordinance attached. We attach the ordinance separately for transparency to show it specifically, so we would request that a motion include the ordinance as Attachment A to the resolution, just for clarity when we submit this to the registrar of voters. Secondly, the ballot language that is in the resolution has bullet points. Again, we wanted to include that for transparency, but I don't think that the registrar of voters can print the ballot question with the bullet points. So he has requested that we provide him authority in the motion to make technical changes to get this actually placed on the ballot. But again, I want to thank you very much for allowing us the time to do this and the space.
Supervisor Royal.
Thank you. I'm prepared to make a motion for staff recommendation, and I will ask if I need to read it out in its totality, or do I, as simply saying, staff recommendation, including those modifications to the bullet points and the attachment language sufficient? That's sufficient? Okay, great. Second.
Remove the second, that's Supervisor Wilson.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to one of the comments I think was relevant, which is that in sales tax, the people with the least pay the biggest portion of their income in terms of the taxing. They may not pay the most, but they pay the biggest portion of their income because it's just because they just don't have extra. And so I just, from my perspective, and as long as I'm on this board, you know, I'll definitely be keeping that in mind, which is why we are talking about services for people who don't have vehicles, who don't have cars, or who rely on public transit or other ways of getting around, that they have representation in this process as well because they're paying proportionately a bigger piece for themselves than those that have more. And so I just want to make sure that we are thinking about that. That's important to me. I want to say that this isn't, like, if in my world isn't the measure I would make it, but I think it's a reasonable compromise. I think it's a reasonable way to move forward with a very significant issue that we have in our community. And going forward, we're still going to have to continue through these processes to advocate for these communities as part of this. And to speak to, I'll just use first name Sonny's comment, I can't remember his last name, but in terms of focusing these concerns about multimodal or those issues are really community-based, and that's really the focus of where that's going to be. And we're going to have to rely on our public works to think about those things upfront before they get to those committees. And I think that, I know Tom does think about those things, and I know his staff is very good at that and will continue to reach out. So I'm confident that those things will happen because we're going to keep talking about it and making that happen. So I support this measure in the way that it's written now. I support the board's action today, and I'm hoping that we can have a positive outcome moving forward. And I'm thankful for the community that came out to speak to all the issues that are important, both from the environmental community and everybody else that has to get around. Thanks.
Okay, as Sean mentioned, I'm going to ask you to read it again. Remind us again what is not taxable?
Not taxable under this measure is groceries sold as food, prescription drugs, medical and dental services, real estate transactions, diapers, feminine hygiene products, education, and rent.
Okay. And I'm just saying, when you take a lot of that out, which is a lot of our spending dollars and everything else, and going either which way, you know, when we improve transit, improve roads and everything else, if they spend $5,000 on taxable items, their cost is going to be $50, a little less than, you know, coming down to more than $4 a month for better transit services, better roads, and all that. So I mean, I think when that argument's made, it's a great argument, and it's one we have to be aware of, but you look at some of our businesses that spend $4 million on taxable materials and stuff between their fuels, their tires, their everything else. And then the other thing is, it was mentioned earlier about this is going to make Eureka very, right now, the unincorporated areas of Humboldt County are, I believe, in five of the six are at least one percentage point cheaper than anybody else. This will not get us higher than anybody, and two of the municipalities, I think there's two that are asking for raises this year, or two or three, three asking for raises. So we're going to still be looking at the back end of the racehorses. So we're going to be a long ways from being at the top of the pack. And the reason they've all done that is because costs have come up. Our fuel tax rate hasn't come up, a lot of that stuff hasn't come through, you know, so it needs to be done. I probably hate taxes as much as anybody because I'm old and I need the money. But when you talk about, you know, having to go out and see Sonny and patrol you, my truck takes a beating, my tires take a beating, everything takes a beating. But Humboldt County has been the cheapest, and we will still be probably one of the least expensive sales tax rates, the unincorporated areas, you know, and as you said, the urban areas. I would hate to think what the urban areas would look like if everybody that doesn't live in the urban areas decided to quit shopping here, because I think 60 percent of all cars, better than 60 percent of all cars that cost go are Eureka City members. So we are, somebody said, we are all in this together, and people take advantage of the roads. And we have a lot of rural roads to provide a lot of resources for everything around us, building, rock, cattle, farming, that doesn't take as much place in the urban areas. So as we move forward, this is a good idea to do. I'm probably going to... I'm probably going to support it. So I think as we move forward, it's, you know, to make it healthy. When Measure Z came through, I gave 20, I donated $2,500 when we did the first ballot in 2012. So I believed we needed it then, I believe we need it now. So it's been moved and seconded.
Ready for roll call?
Please.
Thank you, Chair Bone. We'll start with you.
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Unanimously yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'd like to have our clerk of the board, Tracy D'Amico.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
The item before you is to consider making an appointment to the at-large and alternate positions on the Assessment Appeals Board. So on May 21st, the Board, at the Board meeting, you were notified that we had an at-large vacancy due to the term expiration of member Brian Mitchell. We've also had one longstanding alternate vacancy. Current member Brian Mitchell would like to continue. The current alternate, who is Julie Portius, would like to be the voting seat on the board. And there is one new applicant, Dylan, Dylan, I'm sorry, your last name.
However you want to say it's fine, it's Fearman.
Okay, Fearman, is also here to speak. Alternate member Julius Portius, I think, is traveling today, so I doubt that she's on Zoom, and I have not heard from Brian, just from, except for the original, he was interested. So if you would like to speak to the applicants, or if you have any questions, that would be great.
Well, we have one applicant. Come on up. Aren't Bob Barker's ways? Come on down.
Dylan Fearman. So yes, I applied to be on the Measure Z, or excuse me, that too, actually, Assessment Appeals Board. But I just want to introduce myself. I'm from, Dylan Fearman, from Humboldt County, born and raised. grew up in Ferndale, went to school in Ferndale, and then went to CR, finished the Sac State, got a business degree with an emphasis in accounting, got my CPA license, worked for Nemello, McCollough, Reynolds, and Holland for seven years. Then now I do mortgage loans now, I have my mortgage license, deal with a lot of different real estate individuals on that, appraisers and so forth. I think one thing about both those jobs is that my job is to help people, right? Try to save them as much money as possible, try to maximize their deductions when it was tax purposes, loan purposes, try to find the best interest rate, try to maximize the dollars they have available to get them the most. So it's in my inherent nature to want to help. So I feel like this would be a good opportunity to help this community. This community has helped me in the past. When I was younger, I had some medical issues, had a fundraiser for me, surprise, surprise, Rex was the auctioneer. And, you know, a lot of people I did not know, and even people I still don't know, were there to support me and help me. And I've always thought about that and how I can return that favor. It's a big favor to return things they did for me. And so this is just one small step for me to try to do that, and try to be there for them and be there for people that need help, and understanding that although, you know, not every situation is going to work out in their favor, to do the due diligence and to give them the attention they deserve, and try to, you know, find the best resolution possible. So I appreciate the consideration and thank you.
Any questions?
I have a question. So in this role, which is often sort of a conflict between an individual and the county office, part of that is the fairness to everybody else who's also paying taxes and all these other things, too. So I hear you on, you know, wanting to find resolution and help for sort of the individual, and I hear that, but there's also it's imbalance to
Hundred percent.
everybody else. I just wanted to
Yes, no, very much aware of that, but thank you for asking me that, and no question about it. And so it definitely has to be, you know, an issue worth warranting. And of course, we'd all love our, you know, property taxes to go down and save money, right? Or whatever the appeal may be on the assessment that you're sent. But no, I would definitely take that into account and understand that, as I said, just because somebody appeals it and wants it cheaper doesn't mean that that's going to be the case, and that, you know, there has to be, you know, an extremely significant reason as to why and valid, you know, detailed explanation as to why you think you should be reduced, or, you know, successful in your appeal of that assessment, and looking at everyone else's property values around it, if it's that, you know, and trying to make the most logical reasoning behind it, not just, you know, oh yeah, we'd love to cut you a break, sure, no problem, we'll sign off on it and move forward.
Okay, I just appreciate that. I just wanted to clarify. Through the chair, we have an alternate that's also seeking the open position in there. And so from my perspective, it seems logical to have the alternate move into the open position and maybe
My, I was going to suggest move Julie into Brian's position and have Mr. Fearman and Mr. Mitchell be the alternates.
Second.
It's a motion.
I guess it is.
Is there any community comment on this?
I have no callers.
Any public comment?
Who made the motion?
What's that?
So can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Is there two alternates needed, or just one?
So I currently have Julie as an alternate, but yes, I would like a second alternate because we do only, we typically meet once a month, and those are typically pre-scheduled. However, things do happen, and with a board of only three members, having two alternate has, would be very important. I've had to cancel meetings because we lack that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have. You seconding? Okay, thank you. Hang on, hang tight for a second. All right, we're appointing Julie as the at-large, and we're doing both, Mr., I'm going to say Dylan, and then Brian as the alternates. Is that correct? Okay.
All right, seeing no public comment? I will.
Actually, I have a comment.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't know you guys, we're going to comment on this today. Briefly, I know that the Assessment Appeals Board does not allow public comment, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I'm not sure if you are cognizant of that. And also, in working with the assessors' office over the last few years, from a historic preservation standpoint, it's very important to have the past assessors' handbooks available. Now, I have gone down to Sacramento, but it was during COVID, so I was not able to actually deal with the staff that could have helped me. But due to the history of this county, it would surprise me if we do not have those books available. When it comes to things like monuments and cemeteries, it's super important to have a way to contextualize a tax. So I wasn't sure if this is Assessment Appeals Board topic, but I just wanted to bring it up under this purview and also mention that the form of adhesion that's available through the Assessment Appeals process has changed, where now you cannot appeal past years. So I would have actually applied for one of these positions, but because of the limited scope of what's available to allow you to be eligible for an Assessment Appeals Board position, limited my ability to do so. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you.
This is an important board. This doesn't, this is not the appeals board that's going to have anything to do with the taxing. That's a total different appeals board, or is this the same one? That's a question I have as far as the taxation that was, that was part of some
That's the audit committee.
Different one, okay. Thank you. Thank you for the clarity. They're kind of similar. A lot of these tax laws have changed recently. Many people feel to the detriment of people, whatever latitude can be given. There's a whole bunch of things where a family member was able to receive
Kent, we're talking about the appointments today.
I am, I'm talking about the appointments. So it's very important for these people to have the ability to address the changes that have been made here and to understand those things. And I strongly support the person here, who sounds like he has the depth of ability, same as Brian Mitchell does, to understand those things. But these changes are major, and they've affected people, and there's major tax changes that have happened. So strongly support you having people that can do the best they can, help people who have lost the benefits of owning property and be able to pass that on to their children. They have the opportunity to speak.
I would just like to clarify that Assessment Appeals Board members do go through some specific Board of Equalization training. That is who the mandate oversight is for our committee. I did have some training with them as well. A couple of weeks ago, they are working on updating training policy as far as keeping current members seated. We're fortunately a small county, so we don't have the amount of Assessment Appeals that larger counties do, but the BOE is definitely working on upgrading and improving not only the training, but the system and the rules in general.
Great, thank you. Well, I like the slate. They've all got deep financial backgrounds, which is a good thing, so with that.
Thank you, Chair Bone. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yep.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Chair Bone?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, we're going to go to the CAO's office on grand jury responses.
Thank you, Chair. Chair Bone, ready for me to
Rock and roll.
All right. Next up, we have the fiscal year 2324 Grand Jury Responses for the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office is a Lack of Oversight Due to a Lack of Foresight. Your board was asked to respond to a number of items, and before you today are some options for your board's proposed response. And Katia Gallardo will give a brief report on the general overview of the report.
I'll take it away. Good morning, Chair Bone and members of your board. For those who don't know me, my name is Katia Gallardo, and I'm the Public Information Specialist in the County Administrative Office. Before discussing the recommendations for your board's responses to one Humboldt County Civil Grand Jury Report today, I would like to first thank the members of the grand jury for their hard work that went into this report. The proposed responses, which will be presented today, as CAO Hayes mentioned, are regarding the 2324 Grand Jury Report titled Humboldt County Sheriff's Office is a Lack of Oversight Due to a Lack of Foresight. This report is primarily focused on independent oversight for the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office. The grand jury advocates for your board to establish a civilian oversight board to review, report on, and make recommendations in support of law enforcement, and an Office of Inspector General to provide an independent professional assessment of critical incidents and advice regarding law enforcement policies and practices. The grand jury notes that these measures would enhance transparency and accountability in addition to positioning your board to be better equipped to oversee the sheriff's office for the community it serves. The grand jury also notes that while some may say that the grand jury itself serves as an oversight entity to the sheriff's office, there is a distinct difference between the watchdog duties and scope of investigation offered to a civilian oversight board compared to a civil grand jury. In this report, the grand jury found that Humboldt County does not have an independent means for oversight and review of critical incidents and allegations of misconduct involving the sheriff's office, and that this lack of oversight can lead to public misunderstanding and mistrust of law enforcement. Their second finding noted that this lack of independent oversight and review can lead to a misunderstanding by law enforcement of the public's expectations. The grand jury also found that the county does not have an adequate means to review critical incidents independent of an external to existing law enforcement agencies. This lack of oversight and review can lead to a public misunderstanding and mistrust of law enforcement, according to the grand jury, and that Humboldt County does not have an effective forum to review alleged misconduct by law enforcement that is independent and external from existing law enforcement agencies, and that this lack of an independent and external forum can also lead to public misunderstanding and mistrust of law enforcement. Staff are proposing that your board agree with all findings presented in this report. While the District Attorney's Office and the Humboldt County Human Rights Commission each possesses varying levels of accountability they can offer regarding the sheriff's office, these roles either are not external to the county or do not have the authority offered in Government Code Section 25303.7. In many regards, Humboldt County voters stand as the ultimate means of oversight for the elected sheriff. That being said, it is important to note that your board has consistently recognized the valuable and essential work that is performed every day by the sheriff and the sheriff's office operations and correctional staff. Their work is greatly appreciated by your board and the residents of Humboldt County. Pursuant to California Government Code Section 25303, the Board of Supervisors has a statutory duty to supervise the conduct of all county officers, which includes elected officials such as the sheriff, and to see that they faithfully perform their duties. This code also specifies that the board shall not obstruct the investigatory functions of the sheriff. Additionally, Section 25303.7, which came into effect in January of 2021, grants the board the discretion to provide oversight of the county sheriff by creating an oversight board, an inspector general, or both. The Civil Grand Jury has made two recommendations regarding this report. Staff has provided your board with two options to consider for each response. Today, your board may receive the proposed responses and approve the options your board prefers, or modify them as you deem appropriate. As such, the grand jury's first recommendation is that your board, by December 31st, 2025, enact a county ordinance pursuant to Government Code Section 25303.7 to create and fund a Humboldt County Sheriff's Office civilian oversight board with subpoena power and subject to the Brown Act. In your board's proposed responses, it is stated that your board recognizes enhancing accountability and transparency is important for fostering community trust, and that the idea of independent review of law enforcement actions should be very carefully considered. Any measures taken should take into account the need for oversight and recognition of the challenging work done by the sheriff and Humboldt County's law enforcement professionals. Approximately nine other counties have some form of sheriff's oversight entities focused, at least in part, on their sheriff's office. Most of these entities have been established by larger urban counties, including Santa Cruz, San Mateo, Santa Clara, Sonoma, and Orange Counties. And more research is needed to assess the potential applicability of these models to Humboldt County. Many California cities have also established police oversight bodies. As the Civil Grand Jury noted in this report, the city of Eureka has established a community oversight on police practices board to increase the transparency of and public confidence in policing matters, including the complaint process. Additionally, while the city of Eureka also maintains a contract with a maximum amount payable up to $90,000 per year for an independent police auditor, that does not include the costs related to the community oversight on police practices board, or the staff time spent by the police department or other employees to staff the committee and work with both entities. The concept of a board or committee which focuses on the functions of the sheriff's office is not entirely new to Humboldt County. On January 5th, 2010, the Board of Supervisors established the Citizens Law Enforcement Liaison Committee. This committee did not serve as a civilian oversight body to the sheriff's office. It was formed to study the operations and functions of the sheriff's office, to also educate the public on law enforcement policies and procedures, receive input from the public on areas of concern, and to make recommendations to the board and to the sheriff regarding the development of strong the development of stronger relationships with the community. This committee had no authority to independently investigate any incident or specific event implicating individual police officers and did not have the authorization to investigate public complaints against officers. On December 15th, 2015, the board considered disbanding this committee due to high turnover. At the time, members of the committee and the sheriff communicated to the board that this committee was underutilized. Recommendations were made for this committee to remain, but to meet less frequently. Ultimately, the board approved a motion to direct the county administrative officer to work with the then sheriff and the committee to modify the meeting requirements and return at a future date. To date, this item has not returned to your board. With this in mind, staff has provided two options for your board to consider in response to this recommendation. The first option is for your board not to implement this recommendation. This option notes that the recommendation for greater civilian oversight is reasonable and that your board acknowledges that enhancing accountability and transparency is crucial for building community trust and believes the concept of an independent review of law enforcement actions deserves thorough consideration. It is simply not financially responsible in the current fiscal year and it is unclear when the county may be able to undertake such a function. The county is facing a budget shortfall of more than $15 million in fiscal year 2425 and therefore is not in the financial position to allocate additional general fund and staff time for this purpose, including the ability to research and evaluate the necessity create the above described Humboldt County Sheriff's Office civilian oversight board or to pursue relating funding for it. Given the issues raised in this report, it may be appropriate for your board to research and evaluate its necessity at another time. However, it should be noted that any member of your board could bring a discussion item forward in the future if interested in immediately researching the establishment of the Humboldt County Sheriff's civilian oversight board and that would be in pursuant to California Government Code Section 25303.7. So it's your first option. The second proposed response for your board to consider today is to respond that this recommendation requires further analysis. This option allows your board to determine that it is appropriate for your board to research and evaluate the necessity of a civilian oversight board. This response proposes that your board will establish a work group to research models for civilian oversight and further research-related costs and funding opportunities for the creation of such board. As the county is facing a budget shortfall of more than $15 million in fiscal year 2425 and therefore is not in the financial position to allocate additional general fund or staff time to evaluate and create this board at this time, the work group will also consider not implementing this recommendation due to financial and staff constraints. If your board prefers this response, the initial research conducted by the working group and the recommendations will be presented to your board by October 30th, 2024, and that is pursuant to California Penal Code Section 933.05, which mandates specific requirements for responding to grand jury reports. I'm going to go to the second recommendation now. The grand jury's second recommendation is that by December 31st, 2025, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors pursuant to Government Code Section 25303.7 create and fund the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office of Inspector General with subpoena power. Again, the idea of an independent auditor to investigate law enforcement matters is also not a new concept for the county. As previously mentioned, in 2010, the board established the Citizens Law Enforcement Liaison Committee. While this committee did not serve as civilian oversight body to the sheriff's office, Section 4 of Humboldt County Resolution 10-01, which established this committee, allows this committee to make the recommendation to the board that an independent auditor be retained by the board to investigate an incident which the committee believes to be unique, involves extraordinary circumstances, or is of significant public interest. And that is only if, one, the sheriff first approves and agrees with the committee's recommendation; two, the board concurs with the recommendation of the committee and the sheriff for such an auditor; and three, the board identifies a funding source and allocates the funds for the hiring of such an auditor. According to the resolutions, if these three conditions are met, the board may enter into an agreement with an independent auditor. Both the board and the sheriff must agree on the individual selected as the independent auditor. As mentioned previously, the city of Eureka maintains a contract with the maximum amount payable up to $90,000 each year for an independent police auditor. Therefore, there is an additional cost to the county if your board were to implement this recommendation and that is not including staff time. Regarding your board's proposed response to this recommendation, staff has provided you again with two options to consider. The first option is for your board not to implement this recommendation. And this option notes that your board recognizes that enhancing accountability and transparency is essential for building community trust and believes the concept of an independent review of law enforcement actions warrants thorough consideration. However, it is not financially feasible in the current fiscal year and it is uncertain when the county will be able to implement such a function. Again, this option states that it may be appropriate for your board to research and evaluate its necessity at another time and that any member of your board could bring a discussion item forward in the future if interested in pursuing this. The second proposed response for your board to consider is to respond that this recommendation requires further analysis. Given the grand jury's significant interest and advocacy for independent oversight of the sheriff's office, this response states it is appropriate for your board to research and evaluate its necessity further. As such, this proposed response states that your board will establish a work group to research models for independent oversight and further research-related costs and funding opportunities for the creation of a Humboldt County Sheriff's Office of Inspector General. If your board approves this response, initial research conducted by the working group and their recommendations will again be presented to your board by October 30th, 2024 pursuant to Penal Code Section 933.05. And this concludes my staff report and I would like to once again thank the grand jury for the work that they put into this report and your board for listening and your considerations. And as you know, again, I just want to repeat that your board may receive the proposed responses and approve them as written or modify them as you deem necessary and I'd like to thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Very good. Any questions? Answers?
Sure. Thank you for this. I appreciate that there's a number of options that you've prepared and discussed here. And so I'll just reflect on some of my experience briefly in this arena and I acknowledge from the get-go that it's very different. The city and county are very different when it comes to the structure of how the head of the law enforcement agency is, in this case, elected and in that case appointed and overseen by the council and then the Board of Supervisors here. So fully recognizing that the sheriff is an elected official, independently elected from us, I want to say that it was quite an evolution during my time on the Eureka City Council from the time when four police chiefs ago, Andy Mills chose to have a chief's advisory board that seems to have fulfilled a similar function to the liaison committee that the Board of Supervisors previously established. So that was more about looking at best practices, understanding community concerns, communication going both ways between the chief and the community, trying to get advice from other people to round out the voices that the chief was hearing from the community. And he established that of his own volition and then over time that transformed into something very different and it now is an oversight body. And part of that progression was a change in police chiefs, a change in the needs of the community, and a desire for more community engagement and accountability in coordination with law enforcement. And another part of that was having a big and public and very difficult to handle scandal that resulted in a lot of loss of trust. And I think, I would like to think that every agency is performing their duties admirably and correctly, but I think it could happen to any agency that, you know, there could be internal workings that need to be kind of investigated and dealt with in that way that increases public trust. So having been through that whole thing, I can say the value of it is not just accountability or oversight or this idea that they're watching to see where there are mistakes being made, but rather the communication, the value of having that increase in public trust in the community. And those factors are very valuable and I think people have only talked to me about this from both perspectives with the idea that this could be a body that would be a watchdog. I've heard the term watchdog is the primary one where people are saying that we don't need a watchdog, there's already enough mechanisms for oversight and accountability, or we really need a watchdog and this is why this should be implemented. And I want to just say that there's this other really important piece of it that is about communication and understanding and getting people interested in law enforcement even because they can see some of the, and here in the Brown Act body kind of setting, some of what is happening, how difficult issues are being handled, even if a lot of that isn't public information and has to be handled in a closed session of that body or there does need to be a confidential information handled, there is real value in that. So I have also talked with colleagues in other counties, on boards of supervisors elsewhere in the state who are in the process of implementing this or have implemented it and found that it was a long process. So in Eureka, it was eight years almost between the chief's advisory board being formed and then it turning into a civilian oversight board and there was, you know, a big public kind of blow up in between that helped precipitate that change and make it, you know, a stronger or a Brown Act compliant body that people could participate within that public meeting format. So I anticipate that if we even begin the process of exploring it and understanding it and addressing what some of the challenges and costs would be, that it will still be a long arc. And so my position at this point is really that we just get more information and evaluate what that would look like, what some of the costs would be. We've heard some of those, but we don't know for sure. And engage with the sheriff's office about, you know, how could this be beneficial to you or how could it be challenging to you and have those conversations? I'm willing to be in that capacity or have other people appointed in that capacity to have those conversations, but I think if we absolutely say we just can't do it, that's doing our community a bit of a disservice by just discarding the idea outright without further exploration.
Supervisor Metro?
Thank you Chair. Well, Supervisor Arroyo, I appreciate your perspective, having been on the council and gone through a lot. I think the incident you're talking about there that blew up in the middle of it all was the coroner slash mayor, but maybe other things?
It actually wasn't.
Oh, interesting.
That was another issue that happened during my time on the council, but yes.
Anyway, well, I appreciate that perspective. Mine is entirely with the county, with the sheriff. I didn't have that city council experience. I was really pleased to hear Sheriff Hansel talk a couple of weeks ago when we were reviewing the question of whether or not to engage with On Patrol, the TV show, and it was mentioned multiple times that there is a hope that it could actually improve community trust by seeing how the operations work and all that. So I know that the sheriff is very interested in building that trust and transparency in the community, at least based on his comments from what I heard. I think we absolutely need some critical incident oversight in particular. I can think of a number of cases or incidents that have occurred in my five years or so on the board and I don't think I'm disclosing anything I can't when I say some of those were related to lawsuits that we dealt with in regards to Humboldt Redwood Company protesters, the Martins Ferry shootings, and more recently the Cal Poly Humboldt situation where it appears, based on what has been out there, that there was some violation of press rights related to that event. And then more recently, there was some news piece about the, to get the request fulfilled for 200 officers, which ultimately ended up to be 100 officers, the night of the clearing out of the protesters at Cal Poly Humboldt. The justification for that was written up as there was a high probability of violence that would occur and I would completely disagree with that assessment. I think there's a lot of examples around the state where other universities and colleges like Sacramento State and others engaged immediately in discussions with the protesters that led to completely peaceful resolutions and de-escalation very quickly. And I wish that we had proceeded with the same type of approach, but we didn't and it led to confrontations that ultimately led to the 100 officers coming in in the middle of the night. Those kinds of things I think absolutely, you know, should be brought to us. We should be discussing those, but really a CLRB or Citizens Law Enforcement Review Board or a Citizens Oversight Board, whatever you call it, I think would be a good thing. You know, in the responses, I appreciate the argument that we don't have the budget for it right now and we also need to look through a lot of details. I would submit that we can't afford not to do it when you look at the cost of liabilities and lawsuits. You know, if we're going to do a fiscal analysis of this, it's not just the cost of setting up a review board, but it's the cost of not having one and not doing better in terms of how law enforcement behaves and how this stuff engages. And don't get this wrong, I support law enforcement. I supported the raises to, so we could increase recruitment and retention and morale, so it has nothing to do with that. I do think there's a lot of critical incidents that occur, including the coroner deputies, stuff with the stingrays and everything else that happened. And we were promised at that time when that investigation was done that the community would know the outcome and yet when it all got done, it was, well, we can't divulge any of this because of the union stuff or other stuff that occurred that ultimately people never really knew what the results of that oversight were. I have an issue with that personally. I would love to graph the HCSO's liability costs over the last 10 years. I know they've increased. I know that Sheriff Hansel has mentioned that in our budget decisions about increasing costs of worker comp and wages, recruitment costs, and liability costs going up dramatically. And while that in many cases ends up a cost on the department where the liability occurred, that then reduces the funding in that department, which then equates to them coming to us for more funding to cover the other positions. So if we're going to do a fiscal analysis, I hope that we really do a complete one where we look at all the various elements of cost, not just the cost of the review board, but the cost to the county of higher and higher incidence of lawsuits and liability that occur there. So again, I don't think we can afford not to do this, but I recognize the difficult budget situation we're in. I very much like the, appreciate our response in that we agree with the grand jury's statements. The real question here then is, so what do we do next? Are we going to move immediately now to set this up or wait till, you know, we've got to respond or we're going to be late on our response, so we have that pressure on us. So at some level, I think we need to respond today, but it doesn't mean we can't take an action, maybe it's another agenda item like was mentioned as an option, to come back and when the sheriff is in town, I know he's on vacation, but I gotta say, my vacations the last three years have all been interrupted by fires or snowstorms or floods. I haven't had much of a vacation for a long time because of that and we're all affected by that. And yet somehow or another, we got to maintain a life-work balance, otherwise we burn out. So I appreciate that he's on vacation, couldn't be here today. I think it's important for him to be able to be here with us, to represent his department and have this discussion about where are we going to go with this, what are the next steps, et cetera. So perhaps that's another agenda item. Anyway, that's my points at this time. Thank you.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Thank you for the very detailed report and also to the grand jury. I want to say that Under Sheriff Bro would have been here, but he's responding to a plane crash in Neyland and so I do think that another agenda item, if we're going to take some kind of action besides just responding, which is my vote today is just to file and respond, that I would like to work with the sheriff to develop a plan and have him present for that discussion.
Yeah, let's, huh? Can I talk first or?
You keep skipping this job, but you'd like to tell us how to do it. Anyway, I think the sheriff has to be here for the discussion, that goes with that. And from what I understand, you didn't know this was even on the agenda until Friday, so, I, you know, I think when we look at this, I mean, there's a critical response team we already have with the Department of Justice part of it, and multiple agencies that we can use at any time. It's mainly used for officer shootings, but it is available to use. We have the grand jury, and we have the Human Rights Commission. We could take the complaints right to the grand jury, because they're concerned, and rightfully so, on some aspects. I do have a problem, I think how reineck this is, that the sheriff's rating is about 25% better than the board of supervisors, but we're talking about putting an oversight committee on him. I mean, we probably should have an oversight committee on us, maybe. But I would just as soon bring this back and have a decision made with the party that it affects. I think they do a pretty good job of getting the word out there, and what we've done with them, so, and I think they get out in the community, the UCM at a lot of events, and trying to be as many things as he can, so. I would just suggest to file it for now and bring it back, so we can have a full discussion with the sheriff here, and his undersheriff, and his team. That's the only thing I can say. I'll open that, oh, Supervisor Royal?
Can I ask a question about what both of you are saying regarding filing it? I think we have to pick one of these responses to file, so, and they're very different, but a couple of them recommend further analysis, so, we, I think we, it's still required that we figure out what a response is going to be, because there isn't just one here to pick from, so.
Well, my, mine was like, to accept it, and we need to reply, because we have a deadline to reply, and then to come back with a discussion item, and maybe, do you want to say something?
Sorry to interrupt, it just sounds as if you're leaning towards option two, which would allow more time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to make anything, go ahead. Yeah, I just don't want to make a decision without, you know, the party we're discussing, and his department, his elected department that he's been chosen to lead, having a say in it, because we can say whatever we want, but we have, if we add up all our lawsuits, his department may be the least of them, when you talk about it, and some of those, we just, anyway. I would just like to have him here for the discussion, because we're making a lot of decisions on, a lot of things we don't know anything about, so, I'd like to have the professionals in the room to talk about it, and they're not here due to unforeseen act that Supervisor Bushnell brought up, and the vacation time that Supervisor Hansel's earned. I'll make that as a motion.
I'll second for option two.
Public comment?
Thanks. Hi, Alexandra Profont. My legal name is Dawn Alexandra Profont. I am actually a candidate for justice of the peace right now in Incline Village, Nevada, and I'm here today specifically to enter this comment into the public record, which is on behalf of both myself and my husband, Peter Profont, relative to this agenda item and the grand jury. Within the scope of this comment, which I'm actually here to just request that you guys read, because I know that with the amount of information that you all get, both with the emerging technology of the internet, which is still an emerging technology, as well as paper, that sometimes you, sometimes just throw things to the side and they can get lost. So, please, please read this. To that point, regarding the grand jury, there was an article in the North Coast Journal that my husband and I both read regarding who was selected for the grand jury, and that it was threatened. And just for the record, both he and I did apply to participate and never received any word back, ever. In a variety of different formats, we actually made ourselves available. It would help to have, of course, a landline at our house in Ferndale, in order to participate in such things, which we are still trying to recover. But in this comment, it specifically addresses the oversight of court operations, because the sheriff interacts with the criminal component wherein, if a traffic ticket is generated by the sheriffs, not just CHP, there's a fine due. We've been trying to pay a fine to you guys, to the county, for years now, and you haven't accepted it, and there was a third party involved, a fourth party involved, a fifth party involved. Luckily, this infraction does not allow somebody to get arrested on the side of the road, but it was sent to DMV, it's affected our registration, and in the meantime, you're not receiving revenue. So, that's on the traffic side of the court operations. On the civil side, and the family side, there's been other issues, which absolutely have affected the field officer procedure, especially as relates to evictions. So, I would just like to leave you with this. When you're talking about what you create, I pray that you somehow consider how you're going to involve the California State Bar Association and attorney oversight, because abuse of the legal process is likely ensnaring sheriffs and the county into an enormous liability and mess. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I would like to also, as always, thank the grand jury for all the time they spent on all this. I support your option number two also, so hopefully that will be unanimous with everybody who's in the room. I believe, I'm on that board still, since it never was officially disbanded, I think I was one of the last sitting members. We sat around, and we didn't have anything to do, basically, just about nothing came before us while I was sitting there. I think I was put on that as the representative for Sheriff Mike Downing at the time, he had a representative on there. I see, we do have all these other oversight things, and I do understand, not only do we have the elected people having oversight, we have the grand jury having oversight, we have the criminal and the civil judicial system having oversight on these things, where these things can be adjudicated. If you're going to come up with a oversight board, I would strongly support it not just being for the sheriff's department, I think your oversight is needed for many of your other departments also, where people can come in with complaints. Again, litigation does come in, all these other things, and I know it might be nice to have a specific one, but I think an oversight board to deal with all the complaints regarding things going on in the county, some of which I have currently ongoing, so I do have a dog in that fight. But don't just cut one thing out of the herd. I mean, it should be something where anybody who has a problem can bring it forward you, if you're going to set up that thing. I understand not having the money to do so now, and I strongly support you moving forward with option number two. Thanks for my opportunity to speak, and I look forward to hearing from some of the members of the grand jury.
My name's Larry Giventer. I have been a member of the 2022, 2023, and the 2023, 2024 Humboldt County Civil Grand Juries. I'm also a member currently appointed to the City of Eureka's Community Oversight of Police Practices Board, nicknamed COPP, C-O-P-P. I had a hand in writing the grand jury report, which you are reviewing today. This was the product of several months' work by the civil grand jury comprised of 16 members over a period of time. One of the first words in the grand jury report is that oversight is constructive, not punitive. And in order to review this, I want to alert you to some of the work of the City of Eureka's Community Oversight of Police Practices Board. In fact, I want to provide an immediate invitation to one or two of you, that's as many as can be done, to attend today the research which you want to discover. Start now. The COPP Board is meeting today at 3:30 PM in the City Hall, and we will be reviewing reports from our independent police auditor, also in the jury report, called an inspector general. Now, Supervisor Medron pointed out among potential critical incidents what occurred at Cal Poly Humboldt. Today, we will hear from the independent police auditor in a 26-page, single-spaced, after-action report what happened, and the role that the Eureka Police Department had on the front lines on April 22nd. That's today. Come by and listen to that report. It's important, because I'm going to summarize in the time that, the brief time I have here, just briefly from that report. The Eureka Police Department does not have a general mutual aid agreement with regional partners such as the county and the university police department, if I may, just two more sentences. Creating a formal written agreement provides the opportunity for agencies, city, county, and university, and the communities that they serve to consider their own policing philosophies, and how and when they should respond to requests for mutual aid. It is especially important for city--
I gotta cut you off. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I gotta--
Appreciate your time.
They're looking at me like I'm not following the rules. Thank you very much. Thank you for your work.
Good afternoon. I'm Richard Bergstresser, a member of the last two grand juries, and the foreperson for the most recent, and I'm speaking purely on my own behalf, not on behalf of the grand jury. I should also mention that I'm an retired police officer with 20 years of state and local law enforcement here in Humboldt County, so I'm not unfamiliar with the oversight issues. First of all, I'd like to thank the board supervisors and the CIO's office for providing options for you to discuss today. Generally speaking, we just get predetermined responses that you guys discuss a little bit and then approve. So, having the public dialogue of these options is important, and I hope you'll continue it with the other grand jury reports. Let me go somewhat out of order, because I've been scribbling notes. The grand jury is not the appropriate oversight for the sheriff's department. It is a systemic overview and review, it is not a case-by-case review. That would be out of jurisdiction of the grand jury and inappropriate for the local, for the current discussion. I understand about the money. This is a relatively inexpensive idea. I don't mean to take away from the time, staff time that would be involved. This is likely easily covered by grant money. There are lots of grants out there for law enforcement. I'd also like to make clear that this is not like the Citizens Law Enforcement Liaison Committee, which really hasn't done much and had no teeth, but also came about pre the current scrutiny of law enforcement nationwide. A lot of people are more concerned and involved and want transparency than ever before, and they deserve to have it. Let's see. A couple technical things on your responses. At one point, it says that you must respond within six months with not implemented, or warranted, or reasonable. That actually applies to whether you need further study or not. The six-month timeline does not apply to that. You can fact-check me on that, but I'm fairly certain. Option two is the appropriate option. This does need to be looked at, the sheriff should come in and discuss it with you. I understand that you have to respond today officially. Perhaps you can, in your response, put a little qualifier, that the sheriff needs to come in and have a chat with you about this. This is not about oversight of the sheriff. This is about oversight of the largest, most high-profile law enforcement agency in this county. As far as comparing with other areas, the urban areas, there's some comparisons to be had in there, but Humboldt County has often been the leader in this sort of thing. Certainly with the voting transparency, we can be the leader again, and set a model for the rest of the state.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else?
Thank you, Chair Bowden. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Royal? I actually have a point of order clarification to make before we vote, because we have to, may I articulate it before we go ahead and vote? So, the, the, just, I'm sorry?
I'd like to have more discussion.
Okay. So, the recommendations, as outlined in the staff report here, recommendation two is to conduct further analysis, but it says that we will establish a work group to research models and related costs and funding opportunities, including, I assume a big part of that would be communication with the sheriff and the sheriff's office, and that those recommendations will be presented by October 30th, so, I, of this year, which I read all that to mean we need to make that determination about who the work group is in our meeting. So, that seemed to me to need further discussion.
My thought was that we would return in, later in August, to have the conversation with the sheriff present, and for your board to designate who would be a party to that work group.
Okay. That just doesn't give them a lot of time between then and October 30th, but I'm okay with that. I don't, I think the work group will still have the same task regardless of when it is established.
They'll have two months. I know, that's, that's a short amount of time for, but they can do it. Supervisor Wilson?
Well, I appreciate the work of the grand jury on this, and staff, and I agree that providing us these options is extremely helpful. I do, and I really appreciate actually the experience that Supervisor Arroyo brings to this discussion from what's transpired in Eureka, and I appreciate what she's saying around the timeframe that it took to get there, and honestly, there was sort of an attempt to start that within this institution, and it just kind of, for whatever reason, it fizzled out, and that, that is what it is. And I also think that the points about, you know, the relative size of our institution versus others that have these, these programs, or these committees, or whatever you want to call it, is relevant, but that doesn't mean we can't do something different, or something that has some functionality. It's just going to require some thought. So, I support the option two, and I support bringing it back to the board, but I do, I am cognizant of fatigue, you know, meeting fatigue in our community, and what I mean by that, it is, it just, it does require, we keep talking about making more committees, and this, we can, for all these different things, but they do require administrative support, they do require resources, and they require that citizens do it, and show up, and fill out their 700 forms, and all the other things that are, that has to happen. And we sometimes just assume that there's just a cadre of people just ready to go, and then we'll find out, and as, even today, it's like, we're always scrapping for committee members on all these different things, and so, I'm always just cautious about adding another one of those, you know, obligations within our community to step up. That being said, I don't want to discount the importance of this kind of oversight, or whatever we want to call it, or in, interaction, or interface with our community and our law enforcement, and how we can support a positive, more positive relationship. I think that's good. So, those are my comments. So those are my comments. I'm looking forward to what comes back to us in the future, and yep, thank everybody involved.
I think we started a committee, we tried to do this 11 years ago, and I think I was the original, I was the original member in there. And our biggest problem was when you start throwing 700 forums and trying to get a diverse amount of people here, and you get somebody from Hoopaw and somebody from Southern Humboldt, it's hard getting them in here. So we had quite the turnover for a while of members, nothing unlike all the other boards we have. So that was the problem, and I think it lasted, I don't know, 18 months or something like that, I don't know. And then it just kind of went by the wayside. Because the other thing is, we were coming into, coming into meetings, and we had no critical incidents to discuss. And, I mean, I heard of three for the last six years that somebody thought was critical, but we don't have that many. We have a pretty, we have great law enforcement. We, I'm not saying we're perfect, because nobody's perfect, but I'm just saying, we've got a pretty good, so that's the other thing, is you set this up, and then there's nothing for them to do. And that's the other option, so. I just think, we'll see what they put together and see what the sheriff thinks is a reasonable approach. Supervisor Bushnell?
I just wanted to thank you for the invitation to Eureka's COP today. However, our meeting's still going to probably, we have closed session, we have more items, so Tuesdays are a big day for our board, but thank you for the invitation.
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you. And I think part of the, you know, I'll just reflect again, I think there's some commonalities and some differences between the CLC, the Citizens Law Enforcement Board that, or committee that was established in the past by the county and the early iteration of the chief's advisory board. Those were both very different bodies, I think, in the powers that they had and what types of interaction with the public they have and what types of interaction with the department and with sensitive material that they have. The COP board in Eureka now is completely different in its breadth and capabilities and function. And so that, the Eureka early days one also fizzled out. And because their powers were fairly limited and it was really kind of at the discretion of the chief, it was very, very different than what I think the grand jury has recommended. So I think that the, to compare this to the early committee that theoretically still exists and is on pause for the county, they're just very different in their roles, and I think there's a lot to explore. There could be, you know, an ombuds person. There could be a number of other roles or alternatives that we could explore in addition to what the grand jury has recommended, but I think we, you know, as I said before, I think we really just owe it to the public and, you know, to the grand jury and to the sheriff to have this dialogue about what the alternatives could look like and what the costs would be and what a timeline, you know, might look like, because if we reject it outright, I don't think that inspires public confidence.
I think that's why we're trying to vote, to bring it back, to show that we do that. But at the end of the day, and maybe I'm all wrong here, the difference is, he's elected to run the sheriff's department. So it depends how much the level of oversight that he can give and still handle running the department. And that's, I mean, that's what, he's the key element to what we can do here, and I think the reason is, because he's elected, he's earned that respect and that right to make that decision. I'm sorry, that's just the way I feel. If we had the great appointment of just getting three votes and replacing them, and that would, it'd be a whole different story, I'm sure, but that's not the way we run.
This isn't a commentary on the sheriff, just putting that out there again, that-
No, I'm not, I'm not doing a commentary either, but the problem is, is he's elected by the people with numbers we'd all love to have, so it seems like he's, there is not as much opposition to him and his department as we're trying to make it to be. We're trying to make it sound like there is a huge amount of problems, and I don't get that many phone calls about that, I don't get any. So I understand the idea, and I like the idea, of an oversight committee for, if there is an incident that the critical response team can't handle, but to have somebody overseeing his department or micromanaging it is what could very well happen. He doesn't have to answer, I don't believe he has to answer that. He has to be as giving as he wants to be and still keep the respect of the people and the confidence of the people. I mean, it's, maybe I'm too simplistic, but-
May I reply to that?
You can all day long, and I won't, I promise I won't reply. Say what you want.
I, I would just like to reiterate that the role of oversight isn't inherently punitive or one that is about solely the individual who is at the head there, in this case, our sheriff, you know, our current sheriff. I think there's also political change that happens, and, you know, there are a number of reasons why it behooves us to think about during a time where we're not under extreme pressure and duress due to an incident that has taken place. And I will tell you, it doesn't feel good when that has happened, and then you're kind of reviving the conversation with more urgency and because you've lost the public's trust to get ahead of it before anything like that happens, and just to even use that entity to explore what policies and procedures are out there, what fellow agencies do. And I know the sheriff already communicates with his fellow sheriffs, and there is probably abundant information shared there, but the key part of that is that that's all contained within the department, and the public doesn't have the opportunity to interact with that information, to understand it, and to really, you know, continue to develop that trust and transparency and understanding of what happens, because so many of those processes are just completely internal. I think most of us don't know what they consist of, and so there's just that opportunity for people to understand it better, at the very least, and I don't think that the current structure that existed in 2010 or whatnot is what we're talking about here.
Are we ready to finish?
I hope so.
Okay. Back to you Supervisor Arroyo.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yep.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Chair Bone?
Sure.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Scott, you want to read?
There's one more item. There's the probation's 180-day waiting period to bring an employee back as a retired annuitater.
So moved. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment? No one online? Any comment from the board?
Okay, thank you Supervisor Arroyo.
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Chair Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yep.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
County Council, you want to read closed session, please?
Thank you Chair Bone. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9 D2 and E3 in order to discuss exposure to litigation in one potential case regarding the claim for property tax refund submitted by Pacific Gas and Electric Company. It is also the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9 D1 in order to discuss existing litigation in the case of Enray National Prescription Opiate Litigation, County of Humboldt versus Purdue Pharma LP et al., member case number 1,18-OP-45942-DAP.
Thank you. Public comment on this?
Kent Swawski on number two. I'm sure we don't have anything in the budget for that one. Hopefully, we will have something in the budget sometime. That'll be kind of an extra money maybe we'll be getting out of that one, hopefully. Number one, I did wish to thank our always competent Scott Miles on how he agendizes these things for closed session. His anticipated litigation makes a little bit of clarity on it, and that's not done. City of Blue Lake has two things in there with no clarity, and he also attaches the documents which are relevant, and I don't know if that's required or not, but those relevant documents enable us, the public, to understand what you guys are discussing. In other words, when there's a claim like that. So thank you for what you're doing for us there, and off we go. Thank you. Our next meeting, do we have one next Tuesday, or do we have a week? Two weeks. Thank you very much.
All right.
Okay, we're back from closed session. Is there anything to report out? County Council?
Thank you. With regard to item K1, the board voted unanimously to direct the risk manager to deny the claim for refund of property taxes levied for tax year 2019, 2020 submitted by Pacific Gas and Electric Company. With regard to item K2, the board voted unanimously to authorize the acting county council to execute any and all documents necessary for the County of Humboldt to participate in the National Opioid Settlement Agreement with Kroger Company, under which the county will release Kroger Company from any and all claims, demands, actions, and causes of action related to the sale of prescription opiates in exchange for a total payment of up to approximately $1,112,047 over an 11-year period.
Thank you, our board. Just to notice, we will be on vacation for the next two weeks. Our next meeting will be August 13th, and we're adjourned.